If you'd please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, undivided, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Okay. We have a couple of announcements today. It's a sad time to realize that we lose more and more people in our town, some of the folks that have helped us out in our town in various different ways. So I'd like to ask for a moment of silence for the following three situations. The county council would like to extend our sincere condolences to the friends and family of Mr. William Godfrey, who passed away on October 1. Bill was a valued member of the town's highway safety committee since June 14th of 2014. Arthur Art Ducharme passed away on Tuesday, September 24th, at the age of 73. Art served in the Air Force Reserves from 1965 to 1972 and worked for Anheuser-Busch for 35 years. After his retirement, he was employed by the town of Merrimack Police Department as a crossing guard for over the past 13 years, as well as an active member of the Merrimack crime line, where he volunteered hundreds of hours. And it is with great sadness that we acknowledge the passing of our colleague and friend, Jacquel and Jackie Flood, who passed away on Friday, September 27th, at the age of 79. Jackie was an active member of our community who served as a Merrimack town councillor for several years, as a member of the Watson Park Committee, where she oversaw the development and opening of Watson Park. She was on the Parks and Rec Committee, as well as a member of the Highway Garage Committee. Jackie's knowledge, experience, wit, humor, and gentle nature were so important to us all, and we are grateful and honored to have known her. So if you would please join me in a moment of silence for these folks, we appreciate it. Thank you. Does anybody have anything they'd like to add at this point?
I just had the chance, I've worked with Jackie for about a year and a half as a councillor. And as a new councillor, I was lucky enough, she sat right next to me, where Barbara is now, and she was a great example, and a great example for me to have on how to conduct yourself and what type of councillor to be. So I was appreciative of that, and we'll miss her, I'll miss her.
I echo those thoughts tremendously. She definitely brought a lot to the council, she brought a lot of in-depth thought, and careful consideration of the things that she was dealing with. You always want to have different opinions, but she was always genteel and willing to work with people and help us all to understand her opinions versus ours. If they happen to differ, and if they didn't, then she was all with us, and everything was great. So I really did appreciate her input and her value to the council and to the community, and I'm sure everybody will miss her. Moving along, upcoming town council, did you have something? Oh, I'm sorry.
I didn't. When I think of Jackie, I want to think of the funny times and the cute times, and the times that we would debate upon various things in the council. And we would disagree, but we always didn't go out for a drink after, but we were friends after. And we were able to have some jokes, and I'm going to tell the story about Dan Dwyer. During one of the non-public meetings, I'm not going to say what we were talking about, but Jackie made a decision, at which point Dan Dwyer, who was sitting next to her, now, if anyone knows Jackie, you know she was a very strong Democrat. She was very involved in the state politics, we would have a lot of the various people who were running for various positions to her house, she was just very active. And Dan Dwyer was a very active Republican. So during one of these non-public meetings, Jackie made a decision, at which point Dan Dwyer said, "Have you become a Republican? You just made a vote that's Republican, not Democrat." Well, we all cracked up. But that was the kind of fun we had with Jackie, and she did the same thing back with us. So when I think of Jackie, I smile, because there's a lot of really nice memories, and we'll miss her.
Yeah, my thoughts and prayers go out to the entire Flood family, as well as her husband, Peter. There's really not much more that can be said, Mr. Chairman, except that Jackie was a lady, she was thoughtful, she was deliberative, and she always put the community first in every single thing that she decided on. So you can't take that away from her. And her dedication to the Watson Park Committee, I think, is magnified by the fact that she was willing to change her mind and say, "Watson Park is a great location for the dog park." And I think without her realizing that Watson was a better location now, has identified two really wonderful locations that we have in town. And it's to Jackie's leadership and her willingness to be thoughtful about the big picture of those parks that lend credence to why they are what they are today. So, community has lost, they've lost a wonderful woman. And like I said, my thoughts and prayers go out to Peter and the entire Flood clan. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And her and Harold are probably arguing now, because he wanted the dog park at Watson, and he's probably saying, "Why do you agree to that?"
Okay. Upcoming town council meetings. As you've noticed, today's meeting was moved to Wednesday due to a conflict tomorrow night with Jackie Flood's celebration of life. Wednesday, October 23rd, will be our next town council meeting. Too many people were going to be leaving town on the 24th, and so we've opted to move it up so that the next meeting will also be on a Wednesday. On Tuesday, November 5th, in the James Mastrocola Upper Elementary School All-Purpose Room, the New Hampshire DES will be here, holding a public hearing on a draft air permit related to the installation and operation of the air pollution control equipment at St. Obane Performance Plastics Corporation in Merrimack. You're all invited to that public meeting. And then Thursday, November 7th, in the Matthew Thornton Room is our next regular town council meeting. And I just wanted to make a quick note that, following our last meeting and the letters that we sent out, we did have a chance to meet with Representative Pappas here at Town Hall, where he and his people wanted to come in and just talk to us and go over and see all of the material that we had put together. You were there, right? Bill and I and Eileen and Barbara met with Congressman Pappas and his team of people. It was kind of like a four-to-four, it was really interesting. But he definitely understands and is doing what he can from the federal perspective to help us out here in Merrimack, and we appreciate any and all efforts we can get. Eileen, did you have announcements?
Just to follow up on that, when there was a celebration of Community Policing Week, last week, I believe it was, and Barbara and Bill and I happened to be there, and Senator Shaheen was there. And so I just happened to have all my paperwork out in the car, and so I asked her if she would be willing to sit down and talk to me with all the facts and figures that we have and that we presented to the state relative to the fact that St. Obane is still using the same exact chemicals that contaminated our town in their plant. And she was, again, very receptive. Barbara and Bill were there, and both Senator Shaheen and Congressman Pappas's staff has followed up with me, and they're going to be meeting again with St. Obane. And I think one of the things that was most important that came out, that they were, both the congressmen and the senator were very surprised, because they had met with St. Obane in Washington the week before, and St. Obane assured them in no uncertain terms that they no longer use PFOA in their plant. And they do, in fact, still continue to use it. So, we appreciate their interest, and I don't know if Bill or Barbara wanted to say anything else.
Just to draw on that particular point, Eileen, and I don't know if Council Haley has the same thought, but what I found very interesting regarding the visit between St. Obane and Congressman Pappas and Senator Shaheen was, they asked for the appointment. That's the thing, it wasn't, they weren't summoned by Senator Shaheen or Congressman Pappas, they requested the appointment.
St. Obane.
St. Obane did. So that's why I'm flabbergasted at the... As were they, that testimony was presented, and it's parenthetical to what we've discovered here in Merrimack.
Go ahead.
And just a final comment on that, although we weren't able to meet with Senator Hassan at the same time, we were able to get her staffer to come into the meeting that we had with Senator Shaheen, so hopefully he brought that back as well.
I'm sure he did. Either he's a bad staffer. Okay, you had a couple more announcements?
Yep. So, the New Hampshire Secretary of State's office has advised that the deadline for registered voters to make any party changes prior to the New Hampshire presidential primary election is Friday, October 25th. The date of the primary has not been set yet. The department will continue registering new voters until the registration cutoff date, which is expected to be within 10 to 14 days of the primary date. The Merrimack Fire Department Open House will be held on Wednesday, October 16th, from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the Central Fire Station located at 432 Daniel Webster Highway. Please join us for another year of demonstrations and fun with your local firefighters. I know people love them, they go to those events, and the kids absolutely adore it. So, welcome to everyone. I needed to ask you, because I just, I've been trying to arrange a second meeting, as I've told you about, with DHHS, the Department of Health and Human Services, for them to come in and talk about the, what the new PFOA, PFAS, maximum contaminant levels mean to people, particularly those people who are on Merrimack Village District water. They all received something from Merrimack, from the Village District, saying that their numbers had exceeded the 12 parts per trillion. And so, we wanted to make sure that DHHS came and advised people as to what they should be doing. And so, we have narrowed down some dates between the school and DHHS, and they're pretty limited, they're the week of November 18th to the 22nd. And the 19th is not good for the state, they can't do it on Tuesdays. And the 21st is a council meeting. So, basically, you have the 18th, the 20th, and the 22nd. Unless you wanted to convene your council meeting at the, you could, you've done it before. So, any thoughts?
I'd rather the 20th, anybody else have thoughts? Which is a Wednesday.
November 20th?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll send out an announcement and put it on our website.
Okay.
For the 20th, okay.
All right, thank you. Is that it? Great. Any comments or questions for the town manager? That wasn't her report, it was just announcements, sorry. Comments from the press and public, at this point, if you have, if you care to address the town council, please come forward.
Hi, Rose Marie Rung, 21, Ministerial Drive. I want to thank the council for rescheduling this meeting for tonight. And I also want to address one of your agenda items regarding the solar panel exemption. I encourage the council to adopt exemptions for residents who have solar panels. There are over 135 municipalities in New Hampshire that already do that, many of them at 100% of the value. It not only saves residents money, but it provides energy from the source that's renewable and that does not emit carbon. So I think it's a win-win-win, I encourage you, and thank you, Councillor Albert, for getting it on the agenda.
Anybody else? You can make comments to the council, or if you'd like to wait, well, no. Oh, you're welcome to, you're welcome to come up and comment, especially if you want to talk to that last item. You can sit here at the front, or you can stand up, it's up to you.
I've never been here, so I don't know the procedure, sorry.
Well, thanks for joining us.
What this lady just brought up is fine, in my opinion, if the people who choose to have this, it's fine. But where does that leave the residents of this town if they don't have the money to do this, or they choose not to? I think, from my perspective only, okay, that this is just like a personal family choice, I would think, a residential choice. That's all I have to say, so.
Okay. Can you give us a name and address, sir?
Yeah, my name's William Heinz, 3 Dutton Lane, Fablemba, 33-year resident of this town.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, there councillors, and thank you, Councillor Albert, for putting on the agenda. Rudy Baslemans, from 174 Natticoke Road. And the only thing I want to mention is that things have changed in the last year. The benefit of solar has actually gotten down, because at this point, if you're using solar, you're only getting credit for the energy you produce, you still have to pay for the distribution. So, all of a sudden, the payback on solar has gone out way longer than it ever was before, and then having tax on top of that just makes it worse. So, thanks for considering the topic tonight.
Okay. Anybody else would like to address the council at this point? Seeing nobody headed for the mic, we'll move on, thank you. We have no recognitions, resignations, or retirements tonight, nor appointments or public hearings, legislative updates from state representatives. This is not the discussion about SB 300. We're going to have that as a separate discussion, so if that's what you came to talk about.
No.
Okay. Can you turn the mic on, hit your button, please? Thank you.
I'm not used to pressing the green button. For the record, I'm Janine Nodder, I'm serving my fifth term in the New Hampshire House of Representatives. My title is Deputy Republican Floor Leader, so I'm currently the highest-ranking Republican woman in the House. And with me is Representative Dick Barry. I don't know what term you're in.
This is my sixth term, 11 years. I happen to be on the Finance Committee for Division 1 this year.
Well, I want to issue all of you an apology for not coming to these meetings regularly. It's been brought to my attention that you've been hearing one perspective since January, and I tend to rectify that so that you hear the other perspective as well. So if I can't be here in person, then I'll have a report submitted to be read into the record. So I just want to give you a brief update on the current state of the legislative business, as well as address a couple of policy topics. Right now, the Office of Legislative Services is busy drafting Legislative Service Requests, or LSRS, as we call them, for the 2020 session. As of today, there are nearly 700 bills being written. Since I get a lot of email from Merrimack residents concerned about their Second Amendment rights, it might interest you to know that LSRS number 1 through 5 are all anti-Second Amendment gun bills, filed by Catherine Rogers, and possibly a few more as well. The titles of the LSRS can be found on the New Hampshire General Court website. Two weeks ago, Governor Sununu, in consultation with Republican leadership, came to an agreement with the legislative majorities on a compromise budget. It is not a Republican budget, because we're in the minority, but Governor Sununu fought very hard to get 10 of our list of 21 major items included or taken out. After stepping back and looking at the bigger picture, the Republicans consented to press our seldom-used green button to pass the compromise budget, to prevent the October 1st property tax assessments from going up, the government shutting down, and public funding for abortion put back in, to name a few. I only mention the latter because I've heard from a lot of concerned pro-life voters who had questions. The final budget included key differences from the original proposal vetoed by Governor Sununu. First, the compromise budget does not include any increased taxes, unlike the first one, unlike the one from before, which would have raised taxes on large and small businesses alike. The original proposal also included a structural deficit of nearly $100 million. It used one-time funds for ongoing expenses that would have put towns like ours on the hook to make up the difference if that money dried up. Having our state make promises it cannot keep is irresponsible and was a deal-breaker. After coming to an agreement on these two fronts, we came together to pass a budget that provided historic funding increases to our education system, $400 million in municipal revenue sharing, and increased our state's rainy day fund by 5 million. Among these additional funds being invested in our cities and towns, over $1 million is going to be given to Merrimack. A week before we voted on the budget bill, the House convened to address over 50 bills wisely vetoed by Governor Sununu. These bills included, that's, these included bills that stand in opposition to the overwhelmingly successful pro-business, pro-growth policies of previous years, and bills that would harm our state's most vulnerable electric ratepayers. To name one, House Bill 183 would have harmed our state's most vulnerable citizens by giving a massive subsidy to the already heavily subsidized biomass industry. I gave the parliamentary inquiry before the vote to sustain the veto, and I thanked the one Democrat from Merrimack who voted with us on this one bill. We also stopped House Bill 293, which would have unreasonably restricted employers' use of credit reports to limit risk in some of their most sensitive operations. I would be amiss if I didn't also mention that the gun bills that infringe our constitutional rights. I received numerous emails from gun owners in Merrimack, and I did my best to answer each one, since gun rights is an issue I have always supported. Before I go any further, you ought to know that even though the gun bills were vetoed and sustained, because they passed both the House and the Senate, they could be resubmitted word for word, just like they did in 2019, this year. So we'll be debating this all over again. Finally, I'd like to bring to your attention, attention to legislation being drafted as it relates to the county attorney's office. Chief Roy has been frequently and rightfully voicing her frustrations. In a plea for help, she reached out to the New Hampshire Attorney General's office, and they responded by appointing a well-respected former police officer, prosecutor, and police chief to oversee the office. This was the type of help our law enforcement desperately needed, and unfortunately, it appears partisan politics blocked it. I hope the legislation being drafted by my colleague will aid in addressing an issue like this properly in the future, and when the language of the bills are made public, I look forward to updating the council. Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much.
And I have one comment on the solar, and giving a rebate, if you would. Actually, it's a question. Since you're going to reduce the amount of money you take in, because you're giving the rebate, are you also going to reduce the level of spending accordingly? Or are you just going to spread it over the rest of the taxpayers?
That's something we will have to resolve in our upcoming discussions. We don't have any fixed plan at this point.
Just curious. Thank you.
Yeah, are there questions? Go ahead.
Each of the state reps that have come in over the past six months, I've mentioned this to them, and I'm, oh, sorry. I'm getting the signal, thank you. Turn on my mic. Have come in, and I've mentioned this to them, and I'm going to mention it to you folks, and I appreciate you both coming in and giving us an update. Bail reform, you've seen it in the paper, it's a legitimate issue. Chief Capano in Manchester has mentioned it. I see it every day at the Sheriff's Department, this issue. It needs to be addressed. And I'm hoping that you'll support some bail reform, because the way it's written, it's not working. When people can go to jail, go to court, fail to appear, commit crimes while they're out on bail, and they keep getting released, this is an issue. So, I'd love to hear from you, Janine, I just wanted to mention it to you both.
Yes, I have his name, I had to ask how to pronounce his name, but I was, I did, I have a show on the Channel 22, and we were just talking about this today, and I want to do a whole show on just bail reform. Dennis Hogan, our former county attorney, was on the show with me, and we talked about that very issue, bail reform, and what it did was put a lot of pressure on the county attorney's office. It's just not working out, and we understand, and it needs to be addressed. The filing period has already ended, unfortunately, for 2020, so we'll have to pick it up in the following year.
Just want to mention it to everybody that comes in. And Representative Barry, while you're here, I know you came, probably, maybe a year ago, six months ago, you came in and were talking to us about the possible bill on utilities and the property tax revaluation for utilities and so forth. I think that went back to study, am I correct? Or, okay, do we know where that went?
Yes, it had a full study committee, had a hearing, and the numbers that Eileen Kavanaugh gave me, I believe it was 70, 30, that it came in close to that, and it allows for, I think it's a five-year phase in.
Thank you.
I do have a comment on yours. My dad was a cop. And I also, every once in a while, I'll go sit in on a court session. The judge usually says, "What are you doing here? I'm a citizen, I'd like to see this." I saw one hearing where the judge was listening to a guy, a video from the jail cell, looked at him and said, "You know, you shouldn't drink. Have you got a place to stay?" The guy said, "No." "Can you find a place to stay?" He said, "I don't know." He said, "Well, I'm going to release you on your own recognizance, please go find a place to stay." That's one of our judges. That ain't right. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Representative Barry, one of the things that I admired Governor Sununu for sticking on was the structural deficit that was potential in the state budget that eventually has been remediated, is 75%, I think, is what the papers were saying. I guess, from your experience serving on finance, correct? That, are we comfortable that the 25% is going to be manageable two years from now, based on what you're seeing in terms of revenue outlooks for the next 12 to 18 months?
Ooh, you give me a lot of credit.
I'm not trying to give...
I do see a lot of revenue estimates. They are getting to be what I would consider more reasonable. My biggest concern is, I think we're going to have a recession, and those estimates will go, will go down like they did back in 2008, I think it was. And if we go on a spending spree where we're adding people and services, and all of a sudden, we have to start cutting people and services, I would much rather that we be more conservative with our estimates. The numbers I've seen are still a little, they're not as conservative as I would like to see them.
I would have liked to have seen no structural deficit going into 2021. That's me.
Thank you. I didn't have a vote for that.
I understand, I know you probably didn't, but I'll take 75%, so, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Is that it? Anybody else? Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
I want to make one correction to what Representative Nodder said. There has been an LSR filed to address your concern, Pete, about bail reform. And I haven't looked at the actual bill, it's still an LSR, but if it doesn't address your concerns, there's still an opportunity for a bill to be submitted by the Senate. And I'm sure Senators Chanley would be happy to do that.
Thank you.
Representative Wendy Thomas, I just want to give you an update on what I'm doing up at the State House these days. As you know, there's no session, so we're heavy into committee work. Still working on that subcommittee for OHRVs. That is just a bear. We're close to finishing up that bill. But it's something that we really, really have to stay on top of, because if we don't control this, and somebody called it a cancer in our subcommittee meeting today, if we don't control this, the same situation that's happening up north... up north is going to happen down south, and so we really have to get on top of it. So we're close to finishing that bill. I also have met with the Committee to Study Unprotected Drinking Water. Senator Chanley is the chair of that, Drinking Water Sources. She's the chair of that committee. I also attended the Commission on the Environmental and Public Health Impacts of Perfluorinated Chemicals with Councilor Harrington, Representative Rung, Representative Murphy, Representative Nodder, and Senator Chanley. I've also helped to establish the PFAS Educational Materials for New Hampshire Task Force, which includes representatives from UNH, Dartmouth, CDC, DES, DHHS, Superfund Organization, Boston University, advocates from the Seacoast, and Merrimack. And what we're doing is we're designing or we're creating educational material for New Hampshire residents as well as physicians, and we're also looking into creating best practices for neighboring states. We're interested in forming a multi-state coalition, maybe a New England coalition. On October 20th, from 1:00 to 3:00, there's going to be a Merrimack peaceful protest, protesting St. Gobain that has been cleared through the Merrimack Police Department. We are going to stand on the side of the road. We're not going to impact traffic or driveways. And I've gotten commitment from the following campaigns who are interested and who have committed to sending the town of Merrimack a letter of support for this effort. The campaigns are Yang, Bennett, Biden, Warren, Feltes, who's running for governor, Booker, Williamson, Delaney, Shaheen, Beto, and Pappas. So they will all be sending letters of support to the town for this effort. And I think I'll be here before this, but on November 12th to the 16th, I'll be in Washington, DC, and I'm hoping to meet up with some of our representatives and senators to talk about what's happening on the national level. That's it.
Anybody have... Bill?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Representative Thomas, what was the final number in the compromise budget as it relates to the municipal revenue sharing program?
I don't have it. Do you have that?
I don't have it, but it was the same number that I submitted.
I'm sorry.
I think it was...
They were floating 40 million, so I was just...
No, no, it wasn't. I think it was like 1. some...
I think I emailed, at least, Eileen, I think I emailed you those figures. It was higher than what was in the governor's original budget, and it remained unchanged in the budget that passed the House and the Senate, and it remained unchanged in the compromise budget.
As I recall from your email, there were two allotments of money. One was for the school district, which was $623,000 additionally, and then there was another $400,000, and I couldn't figure out what that was. So I asked Paul to go look at it, and he found that it was for free and reduced lunch revenues. So the whole 1.1 million goes to the school.
I actually...
Over two years.
I'll check and get back to you, but I'm pretty sure there was revenue sharing that goes to the town, and then there's additional money that goes to the school district. And the school district can opt to use that to lower their revenue that they need to raise from property tax or not. I mean, it's up to their... To the voters at school district meeting and to the school board, but there was money for revenue sharing.
They are discussing that.
Can you just... I can go back. I can find the email and resend it.
I talked to business manager Chevanelle the other day, and it appears that the numbers that he received, the full amount of money that over a two-year... This money's over a two-year period, and it looks like most of the money is going down to the school. And my contact at DRA has not told me to increase any of my revenues for state funding.
Okay, I'll check that. I believe it wasn't... The revenue sharing was a lot lower than what the school's getting. The increase in the school revenue or the... From the education fund was primarily driven by a change in the formula, which weighs more heavily those students who earn free and reduce lunch. So it wasn't really two different numbers from the school district, but they may have explained it as this is additional revenue because of the change in the formula. But I'll go back and check. I've got my cellphone here and my reading glasses.
Did you want to follow up on that? I had a follow-up. I apologize. As many people are not know, my wife and I, we adopted our daughter directly from DCYF, and I know DCYF has been plagued over the last couple of years with not having enough caseworkers, being able to work with, you know, close to 1,500 kids that are at risk in our state, and I know that there have been talk about increasing funding at DHHS to make sure that we're getting some more caseworkers out there to really, you know, get into, to work with some of these kids that are truly, truly in need of assistance, not even talking, you know, guardian at Leighton case. I'm talking about some real heavy stuff, so I was just curious to know if the compromise budget included funding for DCYF to address that particular problem.
Yes. I know in the governor's budget address, he had pledged to increase the staffing at DCYF. The money that came along with his budget didn't cover that, but the House and Senate took care of that, and that remained untouched.
Okay. Okay, good. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
Peter, did you have something?
Yeah, I did, and I forgot to ask Representative Barry and Representative Nodder, but did you both receive, and did you folks receive the response from the Commissioner of DES within our letter? Okay, just wondering if everybody got it. Okay. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
I read it, all 297 pages.
No, it wasn't. It wasn't that one.
It's five pages. He's being facetious.
Yes. Okay.
Thank you.
We're all set.
Thank you.
Any other comments? I want to make one quick comment, and I'm not trying to pick on anybody, but when I opened my email, and there's a Twitter announcement from a state rep, and it reads, "Damn this stupid idiot to hell," I'd like to think that's not one of our New Hampshire state reps, but of course, New Hampshire state rep was right behind the person's name. So I would like to ask our representatives to please show a little decorum in your public announcements and your public statements, especially if you're going to put New Hampshire state rep behind your name, if you don't mind. We'd appreciate that kind of consideration. Thank you. Any other comments in this section? Okay, Town Managers Report.
Well, we have a new assistant planner again. Yes, her name is Casey Wolf, and she started on September 30th, and she graduated from the University of New Hampshire in 2015 with a BS in community environmental planning. And before she coming to Merrimack, she interned for Rockingham Planning Commission and worked in several land use offices, including the town of Fremont and the town of London Dairy. So we asked her, as I... What I said to her when I first met her is that everyone comes here because they want to be under the tutelage of our community services director, Tim Thompson, and then they move on to greener pastures. And please, would you please stay for a while? So hopefully, she will, but we're very glad to have the talent that we get. Thank you.
Any other comments? Under all business, we have the toll removal discussion. My mic's off, sorry. Under all business, number one, we have toll removal discussion, and added into that, we've added in Senate Bill 300 and invited Senator Chanley to come and talk with us, as well as any of the other reps that would like to join us, to understand how we might proceed further with the whole idea of toll removal here in the town of Merrimack. And I wrote up a summary for the agenda item, just that in an effort to continue work on finding a resolution to the problem of ongoing toll collections at the on and off ramps to the Effie Everett Turnpike in Merrimack, I requested this discussion on options and review and the status of SB 300. The bill was passed by the Senate and is currently in review by the Transportation Committee in the House. Senator Chanley is sponsoring the bill and working to get it through, along with members of our House delegation. It's been requested that we become involved in promoting passage of this bill, and I've been asked to meet with the Transportation Committee on Wednesday, the 16th of October, to provide testimony. As we heard at our last meeting and was relayed to me separately, some of the committee believed that Merrimack should be willing to, and I put it in quotes, "trade with the state for the privilege of having the tolls removed." One option offered is for Merrimack to take over responsibility for the state portion of Continental Boulevard, the bypass extension that was put in between Industrial Boulevard and Route 101A. The specifics of that are open for negotiation. Perhaps DOT would be required to ensure the road is in good condition prior to its turnover. We've discussed this in the past and felt like the cost and expenses were too high, but I wanted to open up and see where we are today before I try and go and talk to the committee. There might be other options to consider, or perhaps, we, the council, feel that no special consideration should be required. Fair play should prevail, and all users should help to cover the costs of infrastructure, not just a few. So with that, do you want to chime in at this point, or...
Thank you. I'd appreciate that, Mr. Chair. My name is Shannon Chanley. I'm a senator.
Can you just make sure your mic is on? Sorry.
There we go.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the council. My name is Shannon Chanley. I am the senator for District 11, which I, as I always say, includes the wonderful town of Merrimack, as well as the very wonderful, also wonderful, towns of Amherst, Wilton, and Milford. And it is my honor to be here tonight, representing the people of Merrimack in this... On this bill. I introduced Senate Bill 300, and I'm going to use my phone because I have, just for purposes of looking at the timeline. I introduced Senate Bill 300 to the New Hampshire Senate. It was introduced on January 29th of this year. But it isn't the first time that the people in the New Hampshire legislature have seen a bill to remove tolls, and certainly it isn't the first time that you folks have talked about it. I don't have to speak to anybody here to tell anyone about the inconvenience of the tolls, but also the financial burden of the tolls and the particular way that it affects the people of Merrimack. There were three exit ramp... There were exit ramp tolls at three tolls, 10, 11, and 12. 12 was removed. We now have an exit 13 that does not have a toll, but exits 10 and 11 still have exit ramp tolls. Now, you know the history. The Everett Turnpike has, since the time those tolls were put in place, the Everett Turnpike has added probably another 20 or so tolls, exit ramps, and none of them is told. The people who travel from Nashua, the people who travel from other places along the way, the people who travel from Manchester, do not pay exit ramp tolls, only the people of Merrimack. And that is the heart of the matter, as far as I'm concerned. That is patently unfair, and it is important to me that those tolls be removed. I have come to understand it in talking to constituents. When I started going out, talking to people in Merrimack, it was one of the issues I heard most often, door to door. Why hasn't it hap... Exit 12 toll was removed. That was part of, I believe it was HB 367 several years ago, which raised what we actually call the road toll, otherwise known as the gas tax. And the exit ramp toll at 12 was removed. As you know, exit 12 isn't a full interchange, so it was somewhat helpful and certainly much appreciated, but I think that 10 and 11 are important. Senate Bill 300 refers only to the exit 11 toll, and that was, from my perspective, a bit of a compromise. I wanted to assure people in the legislature that removing the 111 would be important, because that was one that really, it's the residents of Merrimack who used that. Exit 10 is certainly used by residents of Merrimack, but also by people who are visiting the outlets and some of the other employers in that area. Not that I don't want exit 10 removed, but I said, "Let's start with exit 11." I think it's also important to convey that I... One of the concerns, the opposition to removing the toll is often concern about the revenue that would be reduced. I understand that. I understand that the DOT does not want to suffer a great revenue loss, which is why there are some triggers in the legislation, some ways to sort of account for that and assess that. When... So it was... The bill was heard in the Senate Transportation Committee. It then came to the floor of the Senate, where it passed by a vote of 24 to nothing. It then went to finance, as it often, bills of this magnitude are referred to a second committee. It went to finance, and it was amended in finance to include that trigger of which I spoke. And what that essentially did was, let me see if I can... The toll would be removed upon payment of the proportion of the aggregate principal and interest on bonds issued to finance the New Hampshire Turnpike system that was dedicated to improvements on the Merrimack interchanges on the Everett Turnpike, and upon certification by the Commissioner of the Department of Transportation, to the Speaker of the House of Representatives and the Senate President, the Fiscal Committee of the General Court, and the Secretary of State, that the Turnpike toll revenues of the most recent completed fiscal year have increased over the previous fiscal year by an amount at least equal to the amount of revenue generated at the exit 11 toll. So it would provide some assurance to the Turnpike system that its budget would not be decimated. I think that this is a compromise that I can accept, but it's not the end goal, and I really do want to emphasize that, that we need to work to have the tolls removed. For the... If for no other reason, and the important reason is fairness. It is not fair to expect the people of Merrimack to maintain the Effie Everett Turnpike to a greater extent than everyone else who uses it. So, that being said, the bill after... And once it came out of finance, the bill passed the Senate again on a voice vote. I heard no objection when it passed again. It went to the House. It has been in the House since last spring. The House retained the bill. They have been holding hearings. Some of us, some of your... The representatives, as well as I, have been there advocating for removal of the exit 11 toll, and we are asked each time we are there what the town council thinks, and we've been asked to answer some very specific questions, which I said, "I cannot speak for the town council," which is why I came here tonight, because I really think they would benefit from hearing your viewpoint, whether it's through your chair or if individually you wish to contact the committee. I think that would be very good. I'm also appealing to everyone in Merrimack to reach out, not just to your state representatives and to me, your senator, but to reach out to everyone on the Transportation Committee. I know that there isn't necessarily complete agreement. I know certain folks have raised issues worrying about if we removed the toll at exit 11, would it create greater problems at exit 10, and greater problems at that exit with people trying to get down to exit 10. I am not sure that that is... It's not from discussions I've had with people who do this kind of work, that does not seem to be an expectation, but I wouldn't say it's impossible, but it's certainly not the expectation. I've also asked for some research to try to get some numbers. What happened when... Was traffic diverted when exit 12 toll was removed? Did they see an... Did exit 12 see an increase? I don't have that information. I haven't been... I'm not sure it's been collected. So I guess I'm asking everyone in Merrimack to reach... So I guess I'm asking everyone in Merrimack to reach out to the Transportation Committee and ask them to pass this bill, SB 300, to remove the toll at exit 11. And I'm asking them to reach out to the entire House of Representatives. And I want to point out that, you know, the delegation from Merrimack is a diverse and hard-working delegation, and I think one of the nice things is that there are, there are representatives from both the Republican Party and the Democratic Party, who, people who are, and all are committed to serving the entire town, but I think what, each, you know, we can, each, people who are Republican and Democrat can work in their individual caucuses as well to help persuade their colleagues to, that this is the right thing to do. On the bill itself, let's see, I just want to mention, I was, I am the prime sponsor of the bill. Representatives Barry, Representative Hinch, Representative Rung, Representative Stack, and Representative Thomas are co-sponsors, and that is partly because it's a limit, there can only be six people from the House. So I, there may have been other people perfectly willing to sign on who didn't, but I wanted to let you know that. So my, the last point I'm going to make, and I know you have a roomful of people, then you have a busy agenda, but the last point I want to make is, this is a very important time, where we have a very good opportunity here to pass SB 300. But it is also an important time, because as you know, the 10-year transportation improvement plan is being developed in the very same committee. I said, I called it Transportation Committee, forgive me. It's the Public Works and Highways Committee.
Oh, okay.
That was my mistake. I'm glad.
That's what I called it.
You can reach out to folks on transportation. In the Senate, it's called Transportation. In the House, it's Public Works and Highways. So that was, I was thinking of the name of the Senate Committee. But please, reach out to folks, to your representatives, reach out to the Department of Transportation, and talk about including removal of all of the tolls in the 10-year plan. I think that's, it would be a fantastic way to address this issue, and it's, it would be comprehensive in its, in the way that it is developed. Folks can also access the 10-year plan website and take a survey. Folks can also, up until, I believe it's November 12th, yes, November 12th, submit written testimony, and there are still a few more public hearings scheduled on the 10-year plan. So please do ask that removal of the tolls be incorporated in the 10-year plan. I think I'll stop there.
Okay. I just wanted to ask quickly, I tried to read over at least the one or two-page portions of the bill that I got, and you just kind of summarized them quickly, but I didn't understand.
Okay.
You know, what does all this mean? You did say it means just removing exit 11.
Yes.
The way it's written. And I noticed on the second page where it added the fiscal note, a whole bunch of numbers that didn't make any sense to me as far as what you, what you read, as far as making sure that the revenue is greater than the revenue from the year prior, and, maybe I'm dense, but I really have a hard time understanding how I'm going to testify on this thing when I can't even decipher what the bill's trying to suggest.
Yeah. So I think that what you're reading is the fiscal note on the original bill.
Yes.
And the, but I think that it still would perhaps make sense. The way that the fiscal note is done is that the, the LBA reaches out to the department and asks, what would be the, what would be the cost of doing if we went through with this bill? And the idea is, let me see, just want to, so, as you can see, the, probably if I'm, you know, I think the number that we understand it to be is that the revenue from the exit 11 toll is approximately between 600, the, the, revenue minus expenditure is probably in the $600,000 to $700,000 range. So if it can be understood that that money would not be, once the, the bonds are paid off, if it can be guaranteed that we're not losing that much, we're not losing that, let me see, I'm trying to put it in the right way, I want to say it the right way. The commissioner would have to say that the money that is being collected at the other tolls will make up for the amount of money that, that $650,000 or so. I think I've said that right.
And is there any anticipation of that happening?
I think, well, I think that, you know, it's possible, given the projections they're putting forward, but I, I wouldn't, I think it's hard to say, because the DOT argues that they don't want to lose that revenue, but I'm not really sure that that revenue is as important to them as, it is, that revenue is important. I'm not sure that this is the way that revenue should be collected, which is why I say, for me, it is a fairness issue.
I would certainly agree with that last statement. It also said that the bill, the Turnpike amount had to be paid off, and the revenue had to be neutral.
Yes. And I believe that the Turnpike, that should be done in 2024.
2024?
Yep.
So we're talking about 24, before we could possibly get it removed at this point, even if it passes?
If, yes, which is why I really urge you to move forward with including this in the 10-year plan. Because I think if we looked at the 10-year plan and said, let's aim for 2024, that the bonds will be paid off, and it would be the time to say, let's include this. And I, I really believe that we could make that, we could make that happen.
It's very fascinating, because everything I've seen has been really squirrely as far as calculating that bond payoff.
The numbers, yes. Yep, yep. I would, I would agree with you. I've heard, I have different reports in front of me that have different, different years, different numbers, and I'm operating in the, with the most recent information that I've been given.
Okay.
I remember the first time I came here to talk about it, Ms. Cabanel mentioned, I don't have, I don't have good numbers, and I kind of agree with her.
Does anybody else, Bill?
I had to follow up, but Peter had his hand raised.
Peter?
Thank you. Thank you, Senator Chanley, for coming. Senator, I, we had this discussion, we had Executive Counsel Streeter, then Senator Daniels, and Representative Barry in front of us, I want to say, a year ago, maybe.
About a year ago.
October 11, 2018.
And it was, as mentioned in the paperwork on the agenda, it was a trade-off. There was a suggestion that we take industrial drive and/or Continental Boulevard, and that clearly is too expensive, and it was a, it was a no, no deal, I think unanimously by this council. Now, anything proposed here, there's nothing in the wording that they want any of that type of trade-off, correct? They don't want us to take responsibility for any state roads.
In this bill?
Yeah.
No, not at all.
So now, in that previous presentation, we were told by the delegation that exit 11 was operating at a loss, that it was costing the state 95, or 92 cents.
93.
Per person to go through there, yet they're only charging 50 cents a toll. None of this made sense. I think we were all, how can you say it's a revenue, but it's not, it's a loss? So now I'm hearing that it's a $600,000 revenue, and I'm, I'm not sure what the heck is...
So if I can, there is, I do have an answer for that, which is, and that is that it is a loss to collect the cash toll.
Yeah.
But the cash toll combined with the EZ Pass toll.
Okay.
Generates the revenue.
Okay. And so they predict that this toll, exit 11 is worth $600,000? Is that what I heard?
Yes.
I'm, I'm sorry.
Or more.
I don't believe it, but it's not on you, Senator, but I'm just, the numbers. You know, I guess I think it's at this point that I, I think we saw numbers, the fact that the original amount of money when they built these exit 11, and they've refinanced that loan over and over and over again. So the citizens of Merrimack keep paying this, keep paying this debt, for, you know, really, it shouldn't take till 2024. I appreciate your efforts, though. It's a no, at least we're not being asked to trade something this time, and losing exit 11 is a step in the right direction. It's too bad it can't be quicker, it's too bad folks can't recognize that Merrimack's paid its fair share. So, thank you.
So, and thank you for your comments. I, I don't disagree at all, and I do want us, all of us who care about the folks in Merrimack, to move forward in working to remove those tolls. And 2024 might be later than we want, I would like it to be sooner, but let's agree that the tolls need to be removed and make the plan. We need to put that in the 10-year plan, or we need to pass a bill that says they're being removed.
Well, you know, the thing is, I'm sorry to jump back in, but the interesting thing is, and I said this when the last delegation was here, was that they can pull exit 11 and 10 and 11 out, and who's to say, the way I've seen DOT operate, especially so far with the widening plans, they could easily throw it in down at the Penitenture just over the national line, throw in a toll going right across. So now we're back to square one in reality. So, you know, I, you know, I know we can't get any guarantees on that, but that was one of my skepticisms at the time.
Just a second. Eileen?
I just read this in the newspaper, so, you know, obviously you were there, but what I read that seemed very apparent was that the Commissioner of the Department of Transportation, in no uncertain terms, clearly stated that they would support nothing, no removal of any tolls in Merrimack unless Continental Boulevard was taken over by the town. It was very, maybe it might not have been added to the language, but they were there lobbying hard for that, to, at least what the newspaper said.
And, and the Department of Transportation has its opinion, and it expresses it, and we can disagree and ask the legislature to remove the tolls.
Yeah. Counselor Albert stole my comments, Mr. Chairman. I'm all set, thank you.
I would say, Senator, if that topic comes up and they want my opinion, and I guess the rest of the council can come in, that's a no deal for me, us taking Continental Boulevard. That's a loss for our community.
So I think that is a question, if you're asked, I've been asked to answer for the town, and I can tell them that you said that to me.
I'm one vote, so I say no.
But, but I think that the better, I really do think that the, I do think that your legislators throughout the state would be sympathetic to this if they understood, and the more they hear from all of you and the people of Merrimack, they will understand the impact of the tolls and the people who live here.
I'd like to think so.
So my understanding is, the Senate Bill 300, bottom line is just removal. Has nothing to do with this language that the Department of Transportation is talking about, or the director, whoever it is.
Correct.
And our communication to whoever it should be should address only the removal as stated in Senate Bill 300. And if we're asked, which is maybe a discussion we should have, if we're asked, then we should be able to respond, the council has determined this, as of the state, which is a separate discussion from Senate Bill 300.
Yes, I would say absolutely, Senate Bill 300 says one thing. Of course, it is still a bill. A bill can be amended. We could amend it, the legislature can amend Senate Bill 300 to say many different things. You know, the House is going to do with it, what it will do.
But we could say, as written, as of the state.
You, oh, absolutely, you can talk about what you...
Because if they amend it, that would negate that agreement.
I will leave you with the as-introduced version.
Perfect.
And as-passed-by-the-Senate version. You can talk about that, but I say, let them know, let the Department, the Committee on Public Works and Highways in the House know what your opinion is, clearly, and I also, again, I don't want to miss this opportunity to comment for the council and all the people of Merrimack to counsel, to comment on the 10-year plan. And I think that the committee, the House Committee can amend this bill any way it wishes, and that's where I think they're asking you, and I'm not going to, I have, that is not my decision to make, that's yours, and I want to hear what you think about that. My efforts have been for removal of the toll.
Thank you. And I appreciate your efforts, believe me, and all of the legislators.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, Janine, if you'd like to join us, come on up. I mean, this is part, I've invited all of you to come in.
I'll take you.
No, I understand that.
I'll sit. Thank you, Senator Chanley, for leading the charge on toll remover this term. I just want the people that are watching this meeting, though, to know that this is not the first time we've had this discussion.
Certainly not.
This is an ongoing contentious debate every term. And I remember my first year, the Honorable Chris Christensen kind of laughing at me because I had this brilliant idea, oh, EZ Pass, 03054, you get a free pass, and he quickly let me know, no, we've had that discussion as well. I live between exit 10 and 11, and I have very serious concerns about exit 11 going away, and one mile away, exit 10 stays. You really think that people aren't going to figure it out, that get off one mile later and backtrack? Already on the weekends, I see a lot of Massachusetts plates going speeding down Camp Sergeant Road, and there's a lot of pedestrians on Camp Sergeant Road. Go there sometime, go at noon. You've got the noontime runners from the area businesses, and in the winter, there's nowhere to go on the road. I get yelled at every year by some old man who thinks he owns the road and I shouldn't be running on it, but that's another story. So I, you know, I do want to see the tolls go away, but I'm so glad you said it, because I had it in my notes. I don't trust them, I don't, I'm not a very trusting person. If they take away the tolls, I think they're going to put up an overhead and charge us even more. So it's, it just all sucks, I'm sorry, can I say that?
No.
They just all need to go away.
Just did.
I'm sorry. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Barbara, did you have something?
Yeah, just a couple of things, because I don't trust either, and I suspect, you know, they have taken that original loan for the exits, and not only refinanced it, but added on another bill, or another, I think it was for landscaping or something at the tolls. So, I mean, that's what extended, that's our understanding as to what extended the original loan to build the exits. So I don't trust it. We may not see that extended again, and why are we paying it? Also, just to back up with Representative Nada was saying, it's true. I live on Back River Road, and since they've removed the off-ramp tolls, we see a lot more traffic coming and going out of Bedford, you know, trying to miss the Bedford tolls. So yeah, Back River Road has definitely picked up in the traffic. So yeah, there will be, I expect there will be some kind of fallout, if you will, if those tolls get pulled off of 11. But we'll deal with it when the time comes.
So I definitely have gotten feedback from our reps that the committee chair is wanting to trade something with the town of Merrimack. And I've been asked and wondered why, why the town's not willing to pay $250,000 a year to reduce $600 or $1.2 million in toll charges for people that come through Merrimack. And I guess part of my reasoning, by not being excited about it, is that we got stuck in this thing in the first place by some people being promised, we'll give you these tolls, and we're of course going to toll the other exits that we build along the highway if you guys are willing to pay the tolls. So as soon as we are willing to take over the road, I'm sure there'll be something else the legislature will change its mind on, or the Department of Transportation will change its mind on, that says, you have to do this as well, or you got to go here, or, you know, we're buying a pig in a poke, and I'm not anxious to get into that bed again. And it's not that I don't, how do I say this? And it's not that I don't, how do I say this, certainly? It's not that I don't trust the legislature, but I don't trust the legislature, because it changes every, potentially changes every two years. And so you have somebody else in there making a decision based on what their background and their neighborhood wants or needs. And I understand that they don't want to lose the revenue, but I don't think we're getting a very good deal out of this whole thing. I think it was poorly crafted in the first place, and it obviously wasn't well delineated when they said, oh, well, after you pay the toll off, you know, pay off the bond, we'll remove the tolls, back when it was originally installed. And yet, nobody could tell us until recently how much was owed on the tolls, or how much the bonds were. And we finally got a spreadsheet that's really big and includes not one, but several different refinances that include Continental Boulevard, include other things as well. And so while the Commissioner has assured us that they're, they're figuring just the amount that we're paid for the tolls, and I guess that's Exit 10 or 11, but not necessarily both, it just, I have a hard time believing that we're not going to find ourselves down the road in some other situation similar 20 years from now with some expectation. What I don't know is who would control that road if we were to take it? I mean, would we be allowed to define curb cuts and things like that if we took that road from the DOT? Right now, we can't. We have to go to them and ask for permission. If it becomes our road and we're maintaining it, I would think that we'd be in charge of it.
That's correct.
Whether the state wants us to do that, considering it's one of their feeder roads from 101A and East West Highway to the north, to the turnpike, which is north-south, they put it in there to try and alleviate some of the traffic through Nashua. So I don't see why we should be taking up that expense. And shortsighted, or whatever it might be, you know, to spend $200,000 or $300,000 a year to maintain that road, whatever the number is, versus the $1.2 million in toll collections at Exit 11, I guess that's what these numbers are saying. Because I keep, it keeps referring to multiple tolls and then just the one toll, and then, I don't know what the different numbers are. But, so I have been asked, and I've agreed to go and visit with the committee on Wednesday of next week, 10 o'clock in the Legislative Office Building, Room 201 or something like that. Anybody is certainly welcome to come along. I'm looking for guidance from you guys as to what you want me to say, what you want me to allude to, and that's part of why we have this on the agenda tonight. Finley?
Thank you, Tom. I, I think I'm just burned out on tolls, which is why I didn't even contemplate going to the hearing on this originally, so shame on me, and I apologize. As for me, I'm a little concerned with eliminating 11 and leaving 10, because I think there will be diversion, but I appreciate it, and so I'm supporting the whole notion. People, if they get jammed up, they'll, they'll take Exit 10. It's just not worth 50 cents. But, but in the long term, the state has spoken too frequently about having the open road tolling down, or, I mean, maybe not open roads, about having a Hooksett situation down in south of Merrimack. And so, because they have spoken about it on a number of occasions, I believe it's going to happen. So I would never take over Continental Boulevard nor Industrial Drive because of that specifically, and, and as well as it is a feeder road from the state, for the state, for 101. So that's my guidance for you, Tom, and, because I won't be able to join you, unfortunately. But, but I do appreciate getting rid of the toll and do advocate for that.
Okay. Bill?
I, um, was ironically going to attend the, the 10-year Transportation Plan Committee meeting, which is going to be in Bedford on that same night, October 17th, at the McElvee School in Bedford. So I was actually going to be in attendance specifically to talk about the widening of the turnpike, the barriers that we've, you know, asked DOT to put up for our neighborhoods. And I'm more than happy to, you know, carry the water for whatever the council sees fit as it relates to SB 300, because that's the appropriate form to have that, that particular conversation. But just to echo what Senator Chanley looking for guidance, being one, being one voice, I'm in lockstep with my colleagues to, to my right over here. The albatross in this whole conversation is DOT putting overhead tolling south of Exit 10. That's the albatross. Nobody's going to give me any assurance that they're going to do it, they're not going to do it, because they're already losing money at the Wazoo, at the Wazoo interchange heading to Manchester Airport. So they're going to look for any way that they can to acquire any lost revenue as a result of the, the deal that they made to get the federal grant money to build that particular project over there. So overhead tolling south of Exit 10 is a, it's non-negotiable, no discussion. So that's, that's how I feel about it. So I would circle my back as it relates to the, the 10-year plan. I certainly would appreciate any directive from my colleagues as to what I should be presenting, or in my testimony to, I believe it's Council Gatzis, because it's his district. So Council Gatzis will be holding the hearing in Bedford on that night. So, thank you.
On the 16th?
16th or the 17th.
16th is Wednesday.
Is it the 16th or the 17th?
I think it's the 16th.
I wrote down the 17th on my.
I'll pull it up.
That would be great. Thank you. Sorry, Senator.
I, I would certainly agree with what Senator Chanley said, that we should be encouraging them to put toll removal into the 10-year plan.
And I agree with that.
In any way possible. I mean, yes, Barbara?
And I would specify that if you're going to put the toll removal in because you're putting the overheads in, start it at the border.
No, we're not putting the overheads in.
Yeah, well, if they do.
They can't. I don't believe you can toll on the border.
Never happened.
No, I think it's not allowed.
Well, they could put it at Exit 2, can't they? Where they have all the infrastructure built. Tom? Eileen?
I just, I was curious as to, Tom's looking for guidance on what your position is on taking over Continental Boulevard?
No.
I think I'm hearing no.
Oh, I didn't hear you interested. Okay, thank you.
Dick, do you want to chime in?
Just a question. I thought. For the sun?
Yep.
I was, I was hoping that we had people in the audience that may want to speak, just rather than just us reps and you guys amongst yourselves. I thought that might have been part of the purpose, and I came to listen to what they had to say, and then I might have a comment or two later.
We could certainly open it up if people have comments. Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. Senator Chanley?
Thank you. I just wanted to say one thing. The meeting being held next week on the 16th at 10 o'clock is with, again, the House Committee on Public Works and Highways. And the Chair of that committee is Representative Cludier, and he's a wonderful, thoughtful, earnest Chair. So I really do think that he'd be, he, he would be very receptive to your comments, as well as the rest of the members of that committee. And I just feel compelled to mention that the members of that committee, they've heard this before, they're very thoughtful, but I, I think new information and new voices will be inspirational to them. And I wanted to, let's see, the meeting in, let's see, Bedford is on Thursday, 10:17 at 7:00 PM, at the Bedford Cable TV Meeting Room, 10 Meeting House Road, and that is the, the Gasset Advisory. And again, I attended the meeting, the, the same meeting that was held in Nashua on, I believe it was September 25th, and I did advocate for inclusion of the tolls in the 10-year plan. So I just wanted to.
You mean removal?
Inclusion of toll removal.
Inclusion of removal of the tolls in the 10-year plan. Yes, thank you.
The clarity is, the clarity is appreciated, Senator.
Yes, thank you very much. Thanks for allowing me to clarify that.
You're welcome.
Yes, Lon?
Yeah, I have a, just a bit of a different perspective. I do trust the DOT. Do not look out for the Merrimack residents. They'll look out for their own best interest as they perceive and define it. So if you're looking for my input for testimony or for support, I really appreciate Senator Chanley's discussion with us in terms of House Bill 300.
Senate bill.
Senate bill. I think you, I'm all for that. I have a bit of a perspective on Continental Boulevard and the industrial interchange, and I will just say, I don't think we should be fooling around with it. Thank you.
Thank you. So, Nancy?
Just to finish off the round.
Everybody having a chance.
I concur with what's been said, and I wish I could remember how long we've been talking about this, with the same, for years.
Forty years.
Forty years, well, that's true. But I have not been on the council for 40 years. Thank you very much.
Ever since we joined, yeah.
Ever since, yeah.
Which has been a while.
That's been, yeah. So in terms of what you could say before the committee is thanks, but no thanks, if it's brought up. No, I concur that Senate Bill 300, as presented this evening, is terrific. I have absolutely no hesitation. I would not go with, with any amendments without knowing, obviously, because that may happen in the future. So as presently presented, I would concur. And the idea that we have to have, you know, a trade, thanks, but no thanks.
I'm not going there. So it's a little bit out of the ordinary, but I'd be willing to open it up if anybody from the public would like to give their comments on the whole concept of toll removal in Merrimack. I mean, we've heard a lot of it before, so you don't need to repeat everything, but certainly give us your opinion on how we should move forward. I realize a lot of you are here for the solar exemption discussion later on, so you might not be here for the tolls, but if you do have any comments, now would be a great time
Diane Link, 12 Parker Drive. Just a quick comment about the tolls. I'm a commuter, I'm coming, going down to Boston all the time, and I've noticed over the past couple of years, it's like adding insult to injury to make us pay those tolls when there's all that congestion between 5:00 and 6:00 o'clock at night and getting off at Exit 11. Sorry about that. Exit 11, it's all backed up. It really adds insult to injury to have us pay for everybody else's, and we have such a nightmare between 5:00 and 6:00 o'clock at night. Also, I'm sure you've noticed that there've been an awful lot more accidents and fatalities at our exit, and that's a concern for me.
Thank you very much. Would anybody else like to offer anything? Dick, you want to add something?
Just, just a couple of things. Number one, Senator Chanley is correct. The good representative who is chairing the, the committee has spoken to me a couple of times separately. At, at the last hearing, just after, after she left, I, I addressed that committee and said, I, I think what we're talking about is a rounding error. When you look at the total dollars that the turnpike spends and the amount of money net that they collect from there, it's a rounding error. And I tried to convince the, the committee of that. After that, the Chair came and spoke to me separately and said, we'd, we'd love to hear from the town. We, we need to hear from the town, we need, we need their input. If the town is interested in some kind of a tit-for-tat, I'll say, I don't know what his exact words were, then he said, I think we can do something. If not, I think we can't. He did follow up with me twice, and that's why I, I again asked the, the good Chair here to, to come and say, say your piece, say your piece to them, let them know what you really think about it. But that's, that was the bottom line. You should know a couple of things. Well, first of all, you know that the, the House sets where the tolls are going to be, and the Governor's Council sets the amount.
How much?
That is going in. So if, and the reason we got 12 down was we just said we want the buildings removed, and then the council couldn't collect them. We also didn't want to ever come back if they did get open. There is a proposal to raise tolls across the system that the Governor so far has kept somewhere out of sight of the, of the council, to an earlier comment about if the tolls aren't making money, then why don't we shut them down? Well, it's a, it's a government monopoly. They can raise, they can raise the tolls if they want to. So those, those are the kind of things I've been trying to kick around and figure out, can, can we get some relief? I'm delighted that, that your Chair is coming up and to speak to them. I will be there. We will see if there's, take their temperature, and if they can, if the only way they'll do it is with a tit-for-tat, and you don't want to do it, then that's easy enough. We can, we can move on and try something else, specifically appeal to them at the, at the hearings, the hearing, hearings all over the state, and say, it's a rounding error. And at some point in time, the turnpike system has to have overhead tolls, non-man, non-woman, not non-staffed, I'm sorry. I have, I have four daughters, so I have to be very careful on, on what, what my pronouns and prepositions are, prepositions mostly, and, and do it so that it, it can fund the expansion and the repairs of the turnpike. And stop this, there's a lot of things going on. Your, your comment about the bonding, it's not that the tolls for, the bonding for Merrimack was changed, but it's a bonding for the state system and the turnpike system, and they all get rolled in so that they can, they can have larger numbers and, and lower rates. The Commissioner, Deputy Commissioner is worried that if we show them that we're reducing revenue, then, then the, the cost of the bonds will go up. I, I personally don't think that's the issue. But they do want to hear from you. If they don't hear from you, I'm pretty sure that the bill will not get there. Now, we need one more thing to think about. If we can convince them that this bill goes through, now it's got to go to the Governor for his approval. And if he's going to say, I'm going to, I'm going to shut down a toll on Merrimack, and I'm going to raise, bring the raises to the Governor and Governor's Council, he's, he's got to have a good reason for that. My reason is, I think it's a rounding error. When you look at the total numbers, it's a waste of time to have the people, people there. You're aggravating the town. Please stop it. Questions?
I, I think we're all in agreement with that. It's a waste, and it's an aggravation, and we'll do what we can to convince.
The Chairman of the Committee, they told you that if nobody shows up, they will say no? Because there must be a new person there, because they think it's quite obvious and evident over all these years how the town feels about it. And I appreciate that Tom will be going, at least, and, and do hope people show up.
But John's not no, he's been there, he's been on that committee for a long time.
And I think he knows.
He's the Chair, John Cludier. What, what he said to me was, I think if, if we can do something with the town and maybe do some sharing, then I think I can get my committee to vote for this.
Which means that he really has no interest in doing something.
Which means he, he would be expecting an amendment to the bill to say the town will, will pick up something going on.
Does that make any sense to you?
It's quid pro quo. It's, it's quid pro quo. That's what I said last year when we had this conversation. I apologize, Finley, but that's, that's exactly what it is.
Eileen, did you want to?
Yeah, I just, just for the public's knowledge, in the turn, in the turnpike system, there are three separate turnpikes, the Blue Star Highway, the Spalding Turnpike, and the Everett Turnpike. There are, there were, until Exit 12 was removed, five ramp tolls. Now there are, three of them were in Merrimack. And now there are only, there are four, and two of them are in Merrimack. So you have two in Merrimack, one in Hooksett, and one in Hampton. And all the rest of the toll, there are no other ramp tolls in the whole turnpike system for the whole state of New Hampshire. And I just think people should know that.
Barbara, did you want to add something? Finley, you want to finish out? Finley, you want to finish out?
I don't want to, yeah, really, this could go on all night, obviously. But what I think the legislature has to do is they have to see how they're going to start collecting revenues for the highway system. And it's because, right now, the gas tax, as more efficient automobiles come out, more, you know, as we go to more and more hybrids on the road, it's going to have an impact on your revenues. This has obviously been inefficient. Fifty percent of it goes to manning them and retirements and heating and maintenance of the buildings and all. And it's just the most inefficient, unfair way to do it. And so, you guys really have to sit down and look seriously at how we're going to handle our highway funding into the future. And that's nothing I can do here. But that causes this problem for us. And it does bother me when people don't really know. When they sit here, especially if they've been in that legislature, as long as some of them have, they know how we feel about this. And I'm hoping that they take that into account. And we don't. We can tell them right up front, don't waste your time with an amendment, because we don't want it. And, you know, it's, I don't want the Continental, so, sorry about that.
Bill?
I'm kind of respectfully, Dick, I know that Representative Cloutier has put in a lot of time up in Conca, and he's an esteemed colleague. And he's been on that committee for a lot of times. But to dovetail off of what Council Rothaus has said, you know, to not be aware to understand what the sentiment is going on here in Merrimack, I think is intellectually dishonest. I really do. Because it's been well-known, we've been fighting for a rate relief as it relates to the tolls, ever since I moved into the town back in 2005. If the chairman wants something that expressly indicates the desire of this town council, then I would move, Mr. Chairman, that we authorize the town manager to write a one-sentence letter to Chairman Cloutier that simply reads, "The Merrimack Town Council unanimously supports Senate Bill 300 as written, period. Very truly yours, I am the cabinet town manager." Can't get any clearer than that. And I think that would be something that you could deliver to them personally when you present your testimony to the committee on the 16th.
I guess I don't see the value of the letter per se.
That's fine, but I'm.
At this point, if I'm standing there as the town council chair, making that statement.
Well, I think you have a letter that unanimously, I'm looking at is, you've got something in writing that tells Chairman Cloutier that there are six other people that are standing behind you. Let me rephrase that. There are 28,000 people that are standing behind you that don't like the tolls at exit 11.
Right.
Now, to me, it's the simple message and the optic behind that letter and what it's conveying to the committee and its chairman.
Okay.
May I comment on Representative, on Council Rothaus's comment?
Yes, you may.
Norm Major, longtime Ways and Means Chair, has been putting in bills for the last couple of years. He has one going through, and now there is a study committee on it to look at, how do we, how do we make it fair for people who have gas and their tax and the electric cars and the hybrids? And the ones who have higher weights? And do we do it on a vehicle miles traveled? Do we do it on a combination of weight and this? And so, there's, he's got a, one is working its way through, it's always getting amendments. But he's been working on that concept for years. Right now, it's more for the gas tax. I shouldn't say, I shouldn't say the gas tax, but the road toll rather than the highway tolls. But at some point in time, it's got to happen the same way. And I'm a longtime Massachusetts resident. I think what they finally did out in the western part, which is overhead tolling, everybody pays, and it's on the highway, and it's relatively fair. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay. Yes, Peter.
I know we have, and I apologize to Tom Bowlen for making this suggestion, but is it possible we can move up the disabled?
You want to put your mic on?
Point of order, Mr. Chairman.
Is it possible we can move up the disabled veteran rebate as well as the solar? And I, Tom, I apologize wherever you are, but there seems to be a lot of folks here for those.
When you think about it, yeah, the point of order.
Point of order. I made a motion.
I didn't hear a motion, I heard you talk about it.
No, that was a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Did you get a second for your motion?
Second.
So, the motion is to write a letter?
Have I, we ask Eileen to write a letter on behalf of the town council that basically says, "The Merrimack Town Council unanimously supports Senate Bill 300 as written, period."
May I suggest you put "as written" as of this date?
As written, as of this date, thank you, yes, absolutely.
Finley?
I think if we're going to do that, we should maybe, because I agree, you're there, you can say, "The council has unanimously rejected the," well, supports the 300.
Supports Senate Bill 300.
And not talk about the other, unless they bring it up, the taking over of part of the thing. So, if we're, you know, so if you're going to be, you know, having that with you, it should probably elaborate a little bit more than just the one line. That's all I'm saying. Because you can carry that water as you've suggested.
Right. I suspect rather than just having testimony, there will be questions on their part that I'll have to try and answer. So, that will tend to elaborate that whole question. So, we could certainly present that letter just as physical backup to what I'm going to try and present. I don't know how to elaborate on it anymore at this point, to your comment. But, I mean, what would we put beyond the fact that we support it as is?
Yeah, I guess I was agreeing with you that it's not necessary. But I support it if everybody chooses.
Okay.
Then, can I make an amendment to my motion, Mr. Chairman? That basically says that the town council unanimously supports Senate Bill 300. And it's just, it's on the record. It's a part of testimony from tonight. It's written, it's a matter of public record. And at least you can say it's a matter of public record that the town council unanimously supports Senate Bill 300 as written on this date, as of this date.
Does the second agree with that?
Yes.
Any other comments? We'll call for a vote. All those in favor of the town council supporting Senate Bill 300 as written and presented today. Say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstaining? The pass is seven zero, zero. Any other comments on this question?
Thank you.
Peter, to speak to your request, we had intentionally put this one ahead because we thought the others might take a while, and we could get this one out of the way really quickly, because it's more of a housekeeping issue. If you don't mind, let's see if that's not true, and we'll be done with it in a short order, depending upon how many questions come up. So, if we move to new business number one, town safety policy update. This is basically a housekeeping, the town council to consider the proposed revisions to the town safety policy manual to be in compliance with New Hampshire House Bill 406 and other relevant laws and regulations. Tom Bowlen, our chair of the Safety Committee, is here to present this.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I will try to be brief. I think this is very straightforward, unless I'm missing something. But we need to revise the town's safety policy as a result of the passage of New Hampshire House Bill Number 406, which became effective in July of 2019. This bill addressed employer reporting requirements in the event of death or serious injury in the workplace. The bill added the definition of what constitutes a serious injury and modified the timing and information, excuse me, that employers are required to report to the State Department of Labor in such circumstances. We were alerted by our insurance provider, Primex, of our need to modify the language in the safety policy as a result of this new law. And the changes that you guys have seen in your information packet are intended to do just that. They've been reviewed and signed off on by the town's Joint Loss Management Committee, as well as the town manager and our account representative at Primex.
So, it should be in good shape.
I think, I think that we are.
We're all professionals at this point.
Right. So, it's my understanding that because this is a town-wide policy, any changes are required to be approved and accepted by the town council, which is why we're here. So, it really is a housekeeping matter. But if anybody has any specific questions about it, I'd be more than happy to try and answer them.
Any questions? Comments? Motion?
Mr. Chairman, move approval that the town council approve the revisions to the town's safety policy manual to be in compliance with New Hampshire House Bill 406 and other relevant laws and regulations as presented.
Second.
Moved by Bill, seconded by Barb, because she's faster than Lon. If there's no other discussion on it, we'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? The pass is seven zero zero. Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Which brings us, I think, to where we wanted to be, right, Peter? Item number two, an optional property tax credit for service-connected total disability. Veterans exemption increased proposal discussion submitted by Raquel Perez. I, come on up, please, thanks. The town council to consider proposal to request an increase to the optional property tax credit for service-connected total disability as referenced within Senate Bills 341, RSA 7235, RSA 7227-A, and Chapter 178 taxation of the Merrimack Town Code. All yours.
Thank you. First, I'd like to thank all the veterans that are here tonight, that it is, we are very much interested in probably the removal of the tolls as well. But they've been patiently sitting here, and they have disabilities, and it's been very hard for them. So, I would like to really recognize how difficult it is for them to be here this long. But at the same time, I also would like to give our condolences for the passing of Jacklin Flood. And thank you for giving us an opportunity to be able to meet with you tonight instead. So, you've read it. I can read it again. This is, again, something that I was made aware of in April. And so, I contacted Town Hall of Merrimack quickly, and we are now on the schedule. It did take some time to get here tonight, but we're very grateful to be here. So, what we're asking, the veterans with total permanent disabilities in the town of Merrimack, we are asking for the town of Merrimack to go ahead and implement, to increase the optimal tax credit for service-connected total disability in our town. And so, from the 2,000 to 4,000 total. And if you have any questions, I can address them. Would like to recognize our veterans that are here tonight as well. If you could just raise your hand, thank you, in support. Thank you. So, when I found out about this, I immediately contacted the Town Hall, like I said. And then, there is a listing of veterans who qualify, who are already receiving additional, are receiving tax credit from the town of Merrimack. And we're so grateful for that. We're absolutely grateful for that. So, I don't know where to go from here.
So, what you're asking for is that we increase it from the $2,000 tax credit to the $4,000 maximum limit that the state has imposed with the addition or modification to the RSA?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Does anybody have any comments or suggestions?
I know there's some numbers here submitted by the town manager. I'd ask her just to go over that and explain them to everybody.
Would I have a copy of that available to me? Sure. Paul, could you give that to her? So, from my mind, because I have to put my glasses on here, so.
Mine are on.
So, so there are currently 49 fully disabled veterans in the town of Merrimack and receiving $2,000. And so, to increase that to $4,000, it would be a reduction in revenue of $98,000. Yes, correct. Your math is correct.
Okay, so, in numbers of our tax rate, how much would that affect each person's tax rate per thousand?
Less than three cents. Thank you.
Per thousand of assessed valuation.
I'd like to add to that comment. The average household income in the town of Merrimack is $97,400. The majority of our veterans are way below that.
Did you have a question?
Comment.
Okay.
Yeah, you can make a quick comment if you'd like to.
My name is Santhana Lo, I live on Back River Road. The, the average income of a 100% disabled vet is around $50,000. Okay? So, you know, just take that in consideration when you're doing your numbers. There's no extra, you know? And if you're trying to maintain a home and a car, it's pretty lean. So, if it only affects you by three cents or $100,000 in the course of a year in your budget, it just seems like a reasonable thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I'd like to start the ball rolling and just say I wholeheartedly agree.
Thank you.
I don't think it's debatable, in my personal opinion. When you're 100% service-connected, I worked for the VA for many years, so I understand the history and a lot of the issues. I think we owe it. What's three cents? I mean, I know we can debate about it, but I think we as citizens owe it to our veterans. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Lon?
I completely agree.
Me in a few words.
Barbara?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to go ahead and make the motion.
Sure.
For the council to approve an increase in the optional property tax credit for service-connected total disability as referenced within SB 341, RSA 7235, RSA 7227-A. I'm not doing that.
No. This was, this is a discussion, so it's not on the agenda for a motion to actually take place. It has to go through the ordinance process. So, the proper motion would be to move it to the first reading.
So moved.
Thank you. I have a question.
What is it you're moving, though? I mean, you needed to finish your fourth, to 4,000.
To move it to the ordinance process.
To a public hearing.
Public hearing.
First reading.
First reading. First reading. We need directions for that.
Thank you. Could you please educate us as to the process right now, please, of what will happen next?
Well, if we're talking about, you want to take it, Eileen?
Sure. We have something on here for solar, so that I can give you an example of the time that it takes, if Paul can find it for me. So, basically, there are three readings. So, after this meeting, if the council agrees, there would be a first reading by the council. And then, there would be a public, a second reading, which would be a public hearing. And then, there would be a third reading, which would be final. So, thank you. So, for instance, with, should the council decide to do the solar adoption? The first reading would be at the next town council meeting, which would be on the 23rd of October. And then, on the 11/7, there would be a public hearing. And then, final action would be taken on 11/21, if they followed this process.
Okay, so we're looking at within a month or two months or so?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
That's the fastest that it could go.
That's the fastest, okay.
And no doubt could be handled by April 1st, which I think is the deadline for applying.
That you need.
Okay. So, just a comment, if anyone wants to educate me again, I would appreciate that. So, I found this out through my vet counselor about it. And so, it was passed in, it was passed in May the 5th of 2018 and enacted in January the 1st, 2019. passed in May the 5th of 2018 and enacted in January the 1st, 2019, and so here we are now, today. I just was wondering, is it typical that our town would not find out these things, or, like, I don't even know how it would even begin to find out something like this. Sometimes we just, we just go, we don't even know, we have such difficult processing, we just go and we don't even know what would be available to us. Had I not found this out, how would, who would represent us to let us know what is available to us? Anyone want to comment on that?
Finley?
Well, I think we have legislative updates, so that would be our way, short of ourselves paying attention for issues like that. And, you know, really, it's, that's how it happens, you know, nobody caught it here, you brought it forward, which was a very good thing. And while it may have made the ballot last year, I think there was time, wouldn't there be? No, as of January, so you didn't lose any time anyhow.
Okay.
I guess is your answer.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Do you need this sheet? Okay, thank you so much.
Mail?
We also have a relationship with the New Hampshire Municipal Association. They have their own lobbyist that's up in Concord on a regular basis, and they provide monthly updates through a newsletter that we get along with an email, and I also believe they also send out general communications to people that are on their list serve. So that's another way that we would get information as it relates to not just this particular issue, but other issues that, what they term enabling legislation, like what we had to do with Keno last year. Keno's went to the voters, but the Town Council could have enabled that legislation, actually enacted it here. So when, when the state, through the legislature, does what's called enabling legislation, gives locality, the flexibility, either depending on whether they are, there are two different forms of government, you get board of selectmen, you got Town Councils, you've got mayor, Board of Alton, Mayor City Council, so there's several different forms that drive that. Becoming full circle, enabling legislation would dictate whether it would get enacted at the legislative level, which would be here at the Town Council, or whether they decide to put it, put it to the voters. So there's a couple of different ways that.
Just to be honest with you, I will probably need a translator for everything you just told me.
I agree with you. I agree with you.
I was thinking that.
We say that all the time.
I confuse my colleagues all the time.
That's fine.
It's okay.
But, thank you. All right, so I really liked the language that I heard here today, and one of the phrases was, "We would like to trust." And I am just so grateful to be here with you right now, and we as veterans, with the status that we have, would truly like to trust that you do have our concerns at mind and you do care about us, and we're very grateful for that. And it was an honor, and is an honor, to still serve our country daily and to serve our towns, and so we're just so grateful. Thank you.
Can I ask, can I ask another question?
If you've got a really quick one, sure. Normally, we don't have.
After all of this?
Huh?
After all this, you want me to have a quick question?
Actually, I do.
Yeah. I just want to understand, did you, you can't vote on this tonight? You can't, you can't, but you're all in agreement?
Yes.
If I may.
They haven't had a chance to vote yet, so Barbara has made a motion, and I don't think there's been a second yet, so that's probably why.
There was a second.
Oh, okay.
If I might, real quick, the reason Tom said short is because really tonight isn't the time for public comment, there will be a time in a few weeks.
Okay.
And so, but I appreciate you being here tonight. I don't want you to think that he was just being flipped.
That we're trying to cut you off.
Yeah.
All right, I was just curious as to how you voted for the updated manual or the laws to be incorporated into state laws.
This will be an ordinance, so it's a bit more in-depth, and we have to have hearings for it and so on, so people can have public testimony.
Because this impacts.
No, 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 not at all.
It impacts the disabled veterans directly, but it impacts the entire town, because three cents per thousand is probably thirty to ninety dollars minimum per person's annual tax bill, and that might be small compared to the 4,000 that we're talking about giving to the disabled veterans, but it is an impact to people, and some people are definitely still impacted by their taxes just as much.
I misunderstood the number.
When they, when they talk about the $98,000 credit to the veterans, that's going to have to get raised elsewhere in the town budget. So what that impacts is our tax rate. So the rest of the people in town are going to see their tax bills go up by three cents per thousand of their town, if there's the house evaluation. A typical house, if it was 300,000, would then be ninety dollars that it would go up because of this action that we're taking right now.
Nine, nine, nine.
Nine dollars. Nine, three cents per thousand, yeah, see, nine dollars. So, you know, what's, what's a, what's a power of ten amongst friends? But it does impact the rest of the town, which is why when we go to impact something like this, we do have to have a public hearing specifically to do that, and we have to let people express their opinions.
Okay, I'm okay with that, I just don't understand how it works.
It's just a policy, that's all.
Nope.
Bill will explain it to you.
She was kidding, Bill. Aw, rats. It's just, it's just a procedure, that's all.
My name's Dennis Maglil, I live at One Bruce Street. I just want to make a quick comment.
Thank you.
I waited over fifty years for the VA to recognize the problems I'm going through right now. It took till 2016 for me to even get disability. I am 100%, and that was just given to me last year, all right? And now I'm being told with the town that I've lived in since 1972, that you can't make a decision tonight on something that we were all sent a flyer saying that possibly something could be done. It bothers me, because every year in this town, we have a surplus. So the three cents shouldn't matter to a lot of people. It does matter to us, and that's all I want to say. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Mr. Chair? Peter?
First of all, all the vets here, thank you for your service. Second of all, I think to a person, if we could do that tonight, we would, but there are laws set in place, so please understand that, that, you know, so that's really where this is coming from. It's not, we're not trying to hold it back, so, thank you.
And by law, even if we were to pass it tonight, it wouldn't go into effect until April 1st, to your next tax bill. So it would make no difference between now and then, except you'd have the warm feeling that that's coming.
We could leave here tonight with a better feeling than when we came in, and you know what? There was more time given to those damn tolls and everybody else's worry about the DOTs. This is my first time at any meeting, and I'm ashamed, 33-year resident, and you told that man he couldn't talk. You are wrong and rude.
Thank you, sir.
Excuse me, thank you. I would like for, I would like for our veterans to please, we probably need to discuss this amongst ourselves, so that they can go ahead and do what they need to do. We definitely, we're hurting, we're hurting, we can understand that, we see that we're hurting. So, but let's, let's talk together, okay? The letter that was sent out, everyone has my phone number and my name and my address, my email, and it was stated on here that a proposal to request an increase, that's what it was, so that's what we're doing here now, tonight. Thank you. Please, let's let them move on.
Thank you. Thank you. We have a motion on the floor.
My name is Jim Tupper, 70, turn this on?
No, it's on.
Okay. 76 Bevils at Clay Road. I as well, a hundred percent disabled, I've lived here since 1969, and when I heard this was going to take place, I look at it as a gift, that you're, the town is giving us a gift for our service to you. Now, if you're going to want to put, attach things to it, like six percent, nine percent, whatever, it's wrong. Either you give it to us with no strings attached, no, no conditions, as you were saying earlier, with what the town's going through with the state, don't do that to us. Now, what I would like to say, I'd like to take, I'd like to see if you were willing to let us know where you stand, each individual.
We're about to take a vote to move this to a first reading and then a public hearing.
I understand that. I want to know your personal position, so that if I have to convince somebody, I want to know who to go to.
If you give us just a few minutes to go through our procedures, I'm sure you'll find that answer very quickly.
Okay, I'll take your word for that.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Barbara, do you need to say something? Can we, can we call for a vote on this motion to move this to a first reading?
Please move the question, Mr. Chairman.
I'm calling for a vote. I've already moved it.
Yeah.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, signify by saying no. Any abstaining? So we're all in favor of moving this forward with a raise to $4,000, as printed in the law. And we will move it through our process. You can follow along on our agendas, or we can try to reach out to you more directly, but I'm sure Raquel will help us with that. Thank you very much. Item number three on your new business?
Can you wait a second until people leave?
Yep.
Mr. Chairman, thank you.
I'll put my mic back on, sorry. We'll move to item number three, solar exemption discussion, submitted by Counselor Peter Albert. The Town Council to discuss can consider the adoption of a solar exemption. Now, this is also something that would end up having to go through either as an ordinance or as a item on the ballot for next year, and so nothing will change tonight, just to make that clear up front, okay? Since apparently we had some confusion. Peter, do you want to start us off on this, since we've tagged you for the guy that did this?
I know that this was brought forward by many citizens a couple months ago.
Can you put your mic on, please?
Oh, sorry. All right, I got to keep looking over there. I know this was brought up by many, many citizens several months ago, and then we discussed it in our town retreat. You know, I think the folks that came forward, to me, made a compelling argument of why they are being taxed over and above, or I guess, as we learned through our assessor, that it's within the assessant, the assessment, and that, I guess, I felt like if you're going to do something, you're going to use clean energy, you're going to do something for the right reasons. I don't think you should necessarily be penalized, and I think some of the things that resonated with me were that, you know, there are other forms of energy savings that aren't included in the assessment. So I am in favor of creating, and I want to use the right term, but some type of tax relief with a cap on it, because understanding that this could get very large, and depending on the impact on the, on the tax base, but I am in favor of it, and so here we are tonight, and so I'd like to hear from my fellow counselors. Thank you.
Okay. Finley?
Well, I wasn't here at the meeting when our assessor came and spoke to us, but what I found is that solar panels are being assessed, but we really have no history, we have no proven sales of homes with solar that a like home without is going for any more or less. And I didn't know that's how it worked. I really believed that we had to have, you know, some statistical information showing us that there is an increase. So I've always been opposed to it, it's a value, it's a value in my world, but I don't want to be assessing a home with solar for a value that isn't there, that has not been proven to be there. And so, you know, I'm switching gears a little bit on this, and I want to hear everybody tonight, because I don't know exactly how I'll come down, but that's wrong that we do that, in my, in my opinion. You have to know it's supposed to be, you know, apples for apples comparison, and we're not, we're not proving anything different with what we have, so I might be on board with Peter tonight.
I may be wrong, but I tried to read through the material that we have in our backup, and it certainly looked to me like the state requires that we assess solar if it's on the house. And if there's a requirement that we make an assessment, then we have to come back afterwards and either make a rebate or some kind of a, of a acknowledgement of that. Many towns in the state have already done that and gone with rebates or reductions in the assessment of up to 100% of the assessed value, some with caps, some without, things of that nature, but I think we got stuck in the fact that we have to include them in the assessment, much like you have to include a fireplace in the assessment, even though I'm not sure that adds to the value of a house by the amount that they add to my assessment. But, so I agree with you 99% that there's value there. Now, I think that does increase the value personally, because it, there's a tax, there's a money savings of some sort in the amount you pay for your electricity. You may not be able to sell it back to the power company for any real value, because you don't get to get back the portion that they charge for delivery and things like that. But if you're not buying electricity, you're not paying for the delivery either, so where you do get savings from solar, you are, you are receiving that benefit. But having heard the assessments at $600 a panel, or whatever the number might be, depreciated after five years when they do another revow or something like that, it seems a little high to me, and it seems a little unfair to me, because I know that all panels aren't created equal. And so, you know, my solar versus the guys down the street could be completely different, and yet I have more or less panels and so forth and so on. So I would, I would like to see us implement some kind of a rebate program or reduction for solar, and I think that we ought to do it as the Town Council through an ordinance, rather than putting it on the ballot. And I think that's part of the question tonight, is how does the council want to proceed with this, or do they want to proceed with it? So I'm looking for other inputs as well. Bill?
Nancy first, yeah.
I didn't see her.
I just had a question. Is there a proposal regarding, I, I'm not against it, but I want to know a bit more specifics, or maybe that's what we need to do. Because I believe there does need to be a cap. And if we, I remember getting a list of all the towns that have done something, and almost all of them had caps, not, I mean, some had 100% everything, but I guess that's what I, and what would the implications of that be? Logical question.
I'm kind of hoping that, and I don't, I don't know if Eileen and Paul gave us some examples of.
It's in your packet.
It's in your packet.
Oh, okay, sorry.
There is a proposed solar exemption ordinance that we can move to a first reading.
Yep, I guess that I wanted them to maybe publicly talk about.
So the one that we're being presented with is amount of exemption, which is what you're talking about, right, Tom?
Yes.
The exemption shall equal 100% of the total fixed cost per can.
Your mic's not on, please.
Let me start over. Well, here are the towns, great. Amount of exemption, the exemption shall equal 100% of the total fixed cost per panel in the solar energy system, up to a maximum of 25,000. It does have other sections that have to do with defining solar energy criteria for exemption. The exemption will be given if it follows the prescribed definition of solar energy system as described, and it says it above. So this is what we're starting from, right?
It is a, it is a printed piece of paper, starting point. We can go anywhere we want from there. I would almost immediately jump in and recommend that the third line be modified to the total assessed value, as was suggested by our assessor, as opposed to the total fixed cost.
Per panel.
Where it talks about in A, above, the assessed value as follows, and then down below, it talks about fixed costs. So just to keep it consistent, and with what our assessor recommended, I would say total assessed value in the solar energy system.
Total assessed value, rather than fixed cost, right?
Per panel. Fixed cost per panel, just change that to assessed value. But that's where we're going, and we're looking for more inputs. Bill?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Back to 2017, this council did initially approve. Back in 2017, this council did initially approve an ordinance, excuse me, an exemption to go to the ballot, which was a 50% abatement capped at $5,000. And eventually, there was a motion to reconsider, and that motion to reconsider worked, and then the subsequent vote failed. So, there was a discussion back in 2017 regarding that particular issue. That's a number that I'm perfectly comfortable with as a starting point. The struggle that I, and I'll say this publicly, that I struggle reconciling in 2017, in a community that has over, close to 10,000 pieces of property that we assessed, there was only 95 that had solar on their properties. In 2019, and Eileen just handed out a new updated version, we have 112. So, for me personally, and I'm like Finley, I can be turned on this. I struggle with the concept of the town council enacting a benefit for a very small amount of property owners in the community. I'd rather do what I wanted to do back in 2017, and give the voters a say on the issue, and let the voters make the decision as to whether or not they want to approve the solar exemption or not. I mean, I will be the first one to tell you that if going to the ballot box, I'll vote for it. Because of all the same sentiments that Council Albert alluded to tonight. I just personally, I am struggling to wrap my arms around the concept of us as a legislative body, making a decision that impacts a very miniscule section of our community. And I've listened to my neighbors talk about this in the last meeting, and some of the comments that they've made are very compelling. For me, it's a question of process. Do I want to have the town council make the decision, or do I want to have the voters make the decision? And philosophically, I agree with that, I just, from a process standpoint, just having a very hard time wrapping my arms around that. So, I just want to be transparent and candid about that to my neighbors in the audience. Thank you.
Barbara, did you want to add to it?
Not yet.
Not yet. Peter?
Okay. Eileen, as proposed with a $25,000, can you give us an idea of what taxing impact is gonna be?
So, if we look at the list and take out the large one at the bottom, 4.9 million, we come to a number of value of $1,855,000.
I'm sorry, repeat that, Eileen, please. Thank you.
And you add another $25,000 for that other property? Paul?
No, because that's on a different formula, they won't get it. They get it, but they don't get it that way.
All right. So, what is the tax rate effect of $1,855,700?
Okay, so, 45,700. $44,759.
$44,759.
Overall, for the town tax rate?
$44,000 in money.
Okay.
So, that's...
So, what does that affect the tax rate? How many cents?
Is this right, Paul?
What, a penny and a half?
You do it, because I haven't looked at these numbers, so...
I'm sorry?
I just said, I haven't looked at the numbers, so he's gonna give the presentation to you.
Okay, so...
Bill, talk.
Okay, thank you.
We just have to give him a minute.
Yeah.
Should do the connoy there.
To address Bill's comments, though, and I've mentioned this to this council before, you know, I think the voters vote us in for a reason, to make certain decisions. And I feel personally that this is a decision, and I'm gonna say, I don't have solar on my home, so let's take that off the table. But I think this is one of those decisions, much like the veterans' decision, that this council can make on its own. I mean, these people, our residents voted us in, and do we have to keep putting everything on the ballot? I agree, there are some things that are of utmost importance, and then depending on the impact here, you know, and where we stand, I really believe this is something that we can do as a council, and adjust the ordinance, and move it forward through the process as it was laid out in the packet here. So, I'd ask my councilors to, fellow councilors, to think about handling it as the council, and not going to the ballot. But I'd at least like to see something happen tonight, in a positive direction for those folks.
Finley?
Eileen, am I recalling correctly that when Lauren Martin was here speaking to the council, there were no, there was no, we hadn't, what do you call it? No comps, I guess, to compare? So, for me, the real issue has become, I always tell people, they come here complaining that they're over-assessed, I always ask them, what's the, do you think you could get for your home what the town has it assessed for? Because that should be it. It should be an accurate assessment, basically, within whatever percent we're at of the value. And if we're assessing these things for an extra, you know, 25 grand of value, and it's not there, that's wrong. And I didn't know we were doing that until after that meeting. And so, but for me, it makes it a little easier to, because I'm generally with Bill on moving it to the ballot for something like this. But, I'm not so much now, because I really think that the assessment is appearing to me to not be fair and accurate.
And I had raised the issue back a couple of months ago regarding the comps process, because it's very difficult for people to get, and I say this sincerely, they're not able to get a fair abatement, because as we've learned from our time sitting on this body, that doing assessing is, it's not an art, it's not a science, it's an art form. But what Lauren has to do to come up with five comparable properties in this community to make a determination as to whether somebody qualifies for an abatement or not, just by the mere fact that there's only 112 pieces of property that have solar in this community, I think is indicative of the struggle that the assessor has in terms of being able to make that determination. But what I would say, she did also say, is that in the process of every five years, those solar apparatuses generally depreciate, and the assessments that she does reflects the depreciation of that particular, because you may have Model A that was installed in 1980, well, it's not comparable to the latest and greatest here in 2019, that there's a dramatic difference between what we have now versus what was built back then.
So, what I'm seeing is that unfortunately, we were assessing for a value we don't know what it is.
And I would say that's probably correct.
And if we didn't do that, we wouldn't have to give this abatement, which really is kind of annoying to me, that I'm dealing with this right now, because we should not have been assessing them in the first place. Show it, but we don't know the value, because we don't have comps, because we're just shooting pie in the sky, and apparently, the reality is appearing that there isn't that great value added to it. So, now, here I am tonight, saying that I'm ready to have this exemption. Now, when these values go down, I mean, is, we're gonna be back to the point, you know, of where it should be? The house, a $300,000 house with panels, and the $300,000 without, they're just gonna get rid of this fantasy number that doesn't really exist.
May I? Let me just, I agree with you 100, mostly.
99.
99%. But, you will notice, whenever a house is listed for sale, if it has solar panels, they make that an extremely well-documented and highlighted feature, and pointed out to try and suggest to people that you're gonna save on your electric bill if you buy this house. So, typically, you'll find when those kind of features are highlighted, that they are in fact raising the value of the house. How much is a very good question, but I have a hard time believing there's no value in it.
But if we had the proof, then I wouldn't be voting for this, if we had the proof.
Yep. No, I understand.
If I remember correctly, it wasn't taken out of the clear blue sky. Lauren did say that there were, there was available, not within the town, there was not comparable, but there were standards or other sources that she, no, I'm not, this does not imply my opinion one way or the other, but just to clarify, that she was getting that amount from other sources, some realtors or something like that. But you're absolutely right, there were no in-town comparisons, but it was not just made up out of clear blue sky either.
But no, I remember her saying that.
Okay.
Eileen?
That's true, that it wasn't made up out of the clear blue sky, but it did not come from comps. It came from the cost versus rebates versus this, that, and the other thing, that all came together and came to $600 a panel. So, it is, it was not based on comps.
Yep. Thanks.
I think Paul has the answer for your question now.
Okay. Please. We're all waiting.
So, we have $1,855,700 in value of solar throughout the town, and that's made up of various aspects. If you take that amount and times it by the current tax rate, which is $24.12, roughly $45,000. It'll probably be a little less than that, because 24 of these properties that are listed out of 114 that I came up with are over the $30,000, I mean, $25,000.
Yeah.
So, they would not be getting it. And if a property, the way I did my calculation, if a property has a value of $7,200 for solar, they'd be getting the $7,200 rebate, they wouldn't be getting a full $25,000 rebate.
Right.
But, I just want to make that clear to everybody out there, that it's not, if you have solar, you're not getting this automatic $25,000, according to my numbers.
So, Paul, what's the impact, cent-wise? What's the impact?
A little, just barely over one cent.
It's over a penny.
Well, it's half of 98, so it's one and a half.
$25,000 cap?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's probably one and...
One and a half?
A third, one and a half.
Somewhere in that area. It's like half of 98, so we were just talking about three for that, so...
Just to clarify, though, just clarifying question. When I look at the proposed solar exemption ordinance under paragraph three, where it says amount of exemption up to a maximum of 25, let's just say, just pick a property that's, let's say, valued at over $25,000, are they gonna be able to get the maximum of 25, but we're still gonna be assessing them on the difference? Is that how that would work?
Yes.
Because that's how I would get that.
Okay. So, if it's being assessed at 30, they would get a $25,000 abatement? $30,000.
And it's a penny on the tax rate?
It's...
Roughly?
Roughly one and a half. Yeah, it's between one and one and a half.
Okay.
With rounding. Nancy?
Okay, I'm gonna express my opinion.
Oh.
Uh-oh. I was with you, Bill. I am a firm believer in anything that's fiscally, or anything that's substantially fiscally transferable, should be voted upon by the town. And I've made that public. I've since done a little transformation. One, it helps when you know it's only one cent. But I think there's a certain amount of value in backing up people who are trying to do the right thing environmentally. You know, I think, I mean, we talk about recycling and all that kind of stuff, and we, this is the right thing to do, that's the bottom line. So, I would support it. I was concerned about the cap. Okay, I'm comfortable with that. I guess I've been able to satisfy my need to not have to go to the town vote, I think. You won, Peter, in my opinion. You would turn my opinion around, so I would support it.
Mark that down. Barb?
Okay, so now I will have my little say. I agree with that premise, that's what the voters voted us for. And really, truly, you're talking to a woman who has two hybrid cars. So, we would have put solar panels on our house, except we knew about the tax implications where, so we didn't. I think there are a lot of people out there who have done the same thing. They would have done it, but they haven't, just for that particular reason. So, we only have 112 now, we may have more than that in five years from now, we may have a significant number of that. I am for putting it forward as an ordinance and following that process. If we get a lot of pushback, and we have a lot of people who show up for the public hearing, and who express that they don't want it, then maybe we reconsider it. But, right now, I think we move forward with the ordinance process as it is, and let's see what we get at a public hearing.
Okay. Any other comments? Lon? All right. I'm sorry, it's not a public hearing at this point. We'll have a public hearing, no doubt, between now and, at the time anything gets enacted. If it goes on the ballot, there'll be public hearings, if it goes forward as an ordinance, there'll be public hearings, and at that time, we can make changes, so...
Mr. Chairman, I would move that Article 8 solar exemption, Section 177 hyphen 8 solar exemption be moved to a first reading.
Second.
As modified, or as...
As presented.
Well...
100% total fixed cost, up to a max of $25,000. At total assessed value, excuse me, assessed value.
That's how I was...
Okay, fair enough.
Modified, based on, thank you. Based on the total assessed value in the solar energy system.
Yep.
Up to a maximum of $25,000. Anybody else have any other comments or suggestions? That was a motion to move it to the first hearing.
That's correct.
Seconded by, Barb? Do you want to say anymore? You don't have to.
It's peer pressure, Mr. Chairman. It's peer pressure.
It's called consensus building.
Yes.
Seeing no more comments, we'll call for a vote on moving this to the first hearing, as presented with modifications, to line three. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? That passes 7-0-0. So, we'll move this to a first hearing, probably at our next meeting.
The 23rd.
First reading. Well, that schedule is a recommendation.
I just wanted to, you might want to tell people if they would like to speak, they could stay to the end and speak at public comments.
Oh, absolutely. We will have a public comment section at the end, if you want to stick around. Hopefully, we'll get through this before... Before 10 o'clock. Eileen?
So, once again, the same thing as relates to the veterans' exemption. There would be a first reading on the 23rd of October, and then on the 7th of November, there'd be a public hearing, and then final action would take place on the 21st of November.
Okay. Any other comments? Seeing none. We'll move on, if I can find my agenda.
Actually, yeah.
Yes?
Yeah, I'll make a comment. I think, in listening to my colleagues in prior testimony, I think, when it comes down to doing the comps as it relates to assessments, which, you know, it gets to the question of what is fair and equitable. And if we can't allow these people to legally apply for an abatement, and be able to go through the process, and be treated fairly and equitably, then it's not fair to them. So, that's ultimately where I circled back on my thought process, and where I'm thinking on this, so... Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Moving along, there's a, our next item on the agenda is wage scale adjustment for part-time ambulance attendance, submitted by Fire Chief Michael Carrier. Town council to consider the request of wage reclassification of the part-time emergency medical service attendance based on the level of training and certifications as previously discussed during the 2019-2020 budget review.
Good evening, and I guess I'm pulling up the rear here. Just kind of, I did a little memo to Eileen, who she forwarded you, explaining what we're gonna do. So, basically, this is just housekeeping. When we discussed the budget, we talked about basic EMTs, advanced EMTs, and paramedics, and currently, we're paying them all the same. We want to change their pay scale to reflect the certifications that they have. So, alls we need to do tonight is, we're gonna leave the basic EMT in grade one, and we're gonna move the advanced EMT and the paramedic to grade six, so we can meet the requirements of the pay scale that we discussed during the budget. That's kind of where we are. That's all I need.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for the chief? Peter?
I don't have any questions, I actually have a comment. Chief, I don't know the details of it, but I know what you folks in the fire business have to do to get all your certifications and requirements and everything else, and for, you know, a part-time firefighter or EMT, that's kind of a burden too, because they're not making a lot of money, so I support you on this, and thank you for taking care of those folks.
Thank you. Do you have a question?
I have a question. Chief, thank you very much, I appreciate the memo. Page two, you did a chart looking at six ambulance services, and looking at the proposed rate for our part-time. I gather by making this change, while you say there's no guarantee... I gather by making this change, while you, while you say there's no guarantee, we will be able to hire enough part-time, I imagine this is going to make us very competitive now to getting qualified people to fill those particular, particular spots in case there is somebody on our, on our team that's, that's not available to work a particular shift, you'd be able to hire somebody to come in to cover that particular...
The, the object is to, instead of bringing them and training them, and they're leaving to the other services, we're going to offer a competitive wage. So, when we bring them in and train them, they're going to stay. They're not going to say, well, I get fifteen dollars at Merrimack, but there's an open shift at AMR, because I work for them part-time also, I'll just call in Merrimack, I can't come, I'll take the twenty-one dollars there. That's what we're trying to stop from happening, because what happens is, we're not making a third of our shifts, right now, we have a third of our shifts open for the EMS attendant. When they don't show up, that puts a burden on the rest of the crew, because now we have to shift people based on call. They're playing truck bingo. They might be on the engine for this call, they're on the ambulance for that call. I know, she doesn't like vehicles. But, but our whole, our whole response process is filling seats on a vehicle. You know what I mean? And that's how it all works. You have to have enough people to handle that call.
And just as a follow-up, chief, I know previously you've given us data that shows that we're basically a basic life support, advanced life support department right now, with about sixty-five to seventy percent of our calls being those particular types of incidents. Is that still roughly about...
That's still roughly where we are now, as I explained on the budget process, too, is that a lot of our BLS call, our basic life support calls, we have to send an ALS response to them because of the size of the victims and the houses that are hoarders, and people that are on multiple floors. I got four and five-story buildings now, and we have to start carrying these people down. So, we may have somebody that just has an asthma issue that's a BLS call, but I still have to send five people just to get them from their house to the ambulance. So, that's taxing the whole system again. So, hopefully, by this, this change, we can at least not lose, or we can fill the shifts we're trying to fill.
And, and just out of curiosity, if I could, if, if the town council approves the change in wage classification, does this happen tonight? Like, is this immediate, or is this at the next budget?
It's already in the budget, so it's happening immediately.
It's already in the budget, so, okay.
Yeah, the, the part that makes this a little bit easier is, we did discuss this at the budget review time, and...
Thank you for refreshing my recollection.
I'd like to make a motion not to stop discussion.
Thank you.
Thank you. Not to stop discussion, but I'd like to make a motion to at least start this. I'd like to modify the Town of Merrimack classification plan for nineteen, two thousand nineteen, twenty, to add part-time call EMS attendant under grade one, and under grade six, add part-time call EMS attendant, AEMT or paramedic. Those are the two additions.
Seconded.
So, you're adding EMT to the grade one listing?
Correct.
And AEMT and paramedic to a grade six?
To the second, correct.
Do you want to talk to that? It's motions made by Nancy and seconded by Bill?
Well, I think it has been, we were prepared for this. So, this is just finalizing what's already been discussed, and I know that it's been presented before. You have to be competitive, and you're doing all this training, and they're moving, so you have to be competitive. So, hopefully, this will do it, and we'll have more stability.
Okay. Any other comments? No?
And what I would say to Council Harrington's comments, I think it's very important that the chief be entrusted hiring the best, the best people possible, because, you know, seventy percent of their calls are either BLS or ALS calls, so it's really critical that, you know, as Chief Courier builds his, his EMT and paramedic team, that he's got the, the best and the brightest out there, taking care of each and every one of us. And I think this allows us to go after the best and the brightest that do what they do in, in advanced and basic life support, so I appreciate this. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any other comments? Calling for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Abstaining? That passes seven zero zero. Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry for the delay. That brings us to minutes, minutes, minutes. What did I say? We have two sets of minutes, one tabled last meeting.
Did you want to say something?
Did you have something?
No.
We have two sets of minutes on the, the tabled ones from seven twelve, September twelve, excuse me, that we tabled at our last meeting, because it was already almost midnight.
Mr. Chairman, I move the town council meeting minutes of September, of September twelfth, two thousand nineteen, as presented.
Seconded by Lon. I'm assuming that's why he had his hand up.
Yep.
Any changes? Yes, sir? Sorry, point of order.
Point of order. Technically, you have to take it off the table, because it's...
That is correct. Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I move that we take, untable the minutes of September twelfth.
Second.
It's been a motion to untable the minutes of September twelfth by Bill and seconded by Barb. Barb got that one, sorry. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Seven zero zero. So, now we're discussing the minutes of September, what was it?
Twelve.
The twelfth, excuse me. They're untabled.
The untabled, yes.
So, now we're discussing them, and there was a motion by Lon Woods.
Are we discussing the minutes?
We're discussing the minutes now, yes.
I'd like to be recorded as being present for the September twelfth meeting at the heading, please.
Did I miss that?
Did they leave you out?
They left you out, Lon.
That's because you speak so much.
You have to speak more often.
Yes.
I'm figuring you guys out.
Oh, my God.
Okay. Any other comments, corrections, additions, deletions, changes to the minutes of September twelfth? Speak up, because I'm not looking at you. None? Let me just make sure I don't have any. I don't think I do. I have a question. On page sixteen of seventeen, motion made by Council Albert and seconded by Council Harrington to approve the meeting minutes of the town council meeting of August fifteenth as amended, motion carried five oh one. Why do I have a question mark there? Maybe I was writing on the wrong piece of paper.
Carried five oh one, it's six oh oh.
Councilor Albert, oh, Councilor, Councilor...
Five oh one is Albert voting in opposition.
Albert moved it and then voted in opposition. It just was confusing to me that, that you would move to approve and then vote against. And that is what you did, as I recall.
Councilor Albert was exercising being a profile in courage, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, did he abstain?
No, I voted against it, clearly.
Oh. So, see? It was a good question mark. It was?
No, you voted against it.
If I recall, I was adamantly against the minutes.
I do remember now.
And, and you don't want to bother to offer any, why you even bothered to move them?
I took a stand.
Okay.
You took a stand.
So, we'll call for a vote on the minutes of September twelfth as modified, with the change of the vote on page sixteen of seventeen, line twenty-nine being five one zero. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstaining?
Yes.
So, it's a six zero one, with Barbara Healy abstaining. Okay. We also have minutes from our last meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I would move the town council meeting minutes of Thursday, September twenty-sixth, two thousand nineteen, as presented.
Moved by Bill and seconded by Lon. Does anybody have any changes or adjustments? I know I do, so.
I do.
Go ahead, Barb.
Okay, on page ten, line forty, they have the authority for most of Route Three period that connects. Can we just strike that? It doesn't make any sense. It probably did, but it didn't last night.
It must be the DOT.
I don't know what was connecting.
Remove the period.
On Route Three, lowercase t, that connects.
Correct. They have authority for most of Route Three that connects, period.
So, lowercase t. Get rid of the period.
It's in relation to the discussion that Representative Rung was talking about as it relates to Craftsman Lane, the content at the Boulevard, and the DOT's role in their jurisdiction.
Okay, next one, page twelve, line forty-four. Can we say, in order to be able to pass an audit, and instead of turn it over to the, can we just say, forward it to the town? I don't think they can turn it.
Into the town?
Yeah. Okay, page thirteen, line twenty-four, presentation is underlined?
Yeah, so, when you go online, it's a hyperlink, and it'll pull up the presentation for the person who will be reviewing it.
Okay.
That was page, what, thirteen?
Thirteen.
Right.
Not really intuitive when you're looking at the hard copy.
No, I got you.
Okay, page fifteen, line one, limit should be looked at again, and get rid of the if. On page fourteen, seventeen, line twenty-six, she questioned the drip pan, should be dipped pan. Last one, page twenty-three, line thirty-seven, I think insurance should be interest.
Yeah, that's the one I caught.
And on line forty-seven, he can see there is an opportunity he was unimaginating of softening the blow. Does that make sense to anybody? Didn't to me.
What page?
Twenty-three, Bill.
Twenty-three, okay.
Line forty-seven.
Okay, I'm behind, thank you.
It was Mr. Rothout's comment, so.
It was about eleven forty-five, right?
Yeah.
I'm remembering.
I'm not sure what unimaginating...
Let me see, I'm sorry.
...opportunity he was, whatever you want to put in there that would make more sense six months from now.
I have to read back a little bit.
He was unable to imagine.
Because I really don't know what the point was at that point in time.
What I remember talking about is, I thought it was going to be easier to, to make, because of the quantity of, the amount in the unreserved front surplus, I thought it would be easier over a few years to gradually cut back, but the, it was being pointed out that, you know, staff wasn't as confident about that, and so I don't know, I don't remember exactly what I was saying. It's, it probably is exactly what I said, because it's, it was late, but... So, that's where I was with the whole thing. So, I don't know how to put my own words in.
I think, I think you can see there is opportunity you were not previously imagining of being able to soften the blow.
Yeah, when you say that, yeah. Instead of unimaginating.
So, yeah. There we go. Make me sound as, as good as you can.
There's opportunity he was not previously imagining, which would soften the blow.
Yes, sounds good.
Sure. That was, oh, the one on interest on line thirty-seven? Instead of insurance rates, it's interest rates? Is that it?
Barb?
Anybody else have any comments or suggestions on the minutes? Seeing none, we'll call for a vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed or abstaining? That passes seven zero zero. Which brings us to comments from the press. How about comments from the public?
Hi, Rose Marie Rung, Twenty-One Municipal Drive. I have those numbers from before, I emailed them to you, too, but the budget that was approved by the governor and House and Senate provides municipal aid to Merrimack at four hundred and thirty-eight thousand, nine hundred and thirty-six thousand, nine, four hundred and thirty-eight thousand, nine hundred and thirty-six dollars. For the school, it would be six hundred and eighty-three thousand, seven sixty-six. So, for a total of one million, one hundred and twenty-two thousand, seven hundred and two dollars. So, I sent you the spreadsheet that has the breakout for all the towns and cities. And then the other point I wanted to make, which I think got missed in the talk about the tolls, was when I was at the last meeting, one of the things I mentioned, that when I testified at the ten-year transportation plan meeting that was held in Nashua, was put on, hosted by Executive Counsel Pignotelli, I did testify that if open road tolling goes in north of Exit Eight, that I would expect that all exit ramp tolls in Merrimack to be going down. So, I just wanted to mention that. And the other advantage, too, with pressing for getting inclusion in the ten-year plan is that goes into effect in 2021. So, we would get three years ahead than if it went, if this bill passed. I mean, I think we should do a full court press, but getting, getting that into the ten-year plan has a three-year advantage for Merrimack.
I don't want to argue with you, but just because it's in the ten-year plan doesn't mean it implements on year one.
That's true. That's why I think we should do everything.
Yes, I agree.
But, I'm saying there are advantages to getting it in the ten-year plan. Particularly, and I think we talked this at the meeting, is that at the highway widening presentation that was at the high school, I think they mentioned that open road road toll, and I, I do think that that's what they're going to do. So, if they're even thinking about that, they should be assuming that we're not going to tolerate the exit ramp tolls anymore.
Thank you. Does anybody else from the public want to address? Aye.
Natalia Byramova, Twenty-Six Crosses Path. I'm back.
I'm back.
So, I want to thank you all for keeping your word and looking into this issue much earlier, and so we can talk about it now as opposed to, you know, in the future of March. So, I just want to do a couple, obviously, you know, I do thank you. I want to just add a couple of comments, because mostly in agreement. So, Councilman Haley is completely correct in terms of people in Merrimack not having solar, because pretty much everybody now knows that as of right now, Merrimack is not a solar-friendly town. Since I do have solar on my house, pretty, you know, you can see it, so people do ask me all the time, and I don't want to lie, I say, yes, I love it, this is my reasons, but just so you know, if you get it, you're going to get assessed and this and this and this, so look into it a little bit further. And, you know, I think that's definitely the reason why we don't have as many houses as we could have, and with this, I think there will, there will definitely be more. And another point in agreement, I do agree with Council Rutherford, that I don't really think it was assessed correctly in the first place, and I don't know how, this is, might be a silly question, I don't know how you guys work it out, but since all these other communities do have this already in place for a while, I don't know if, you know, before really finalizing everything, if you can talk to them and see how, how they came up. Like, you know, our assessor said this and this, that's how they came up with the six hundred. How did they came up with their, because it seems pretty consistent. Like, when you look at that list, it's, you know, a hundred, a hundred percent, this and that, like, it's very consistent. So, they had to come up with those numbers somehow, and some of those communities have been doing it for, you know, for years. So, and I know he's not here, that gentleman that was earlier before, and I just want to comment on his comment, saying that it's a personal issue. Yes, it is a personal issue, but we still do, I still pay SolarCity for my solar. Like, it's not free stuff. It's just assessing it's on top of that. So, it's like, we all register our cars, right, and we all pay for the cars, but then if you tax everybody who owns a Chevy, just because it's a Chevy, that, then, then that's, that's the fairness piece. So, it is a personal issue in, in some respect, but it's also the, you know, there is other factors to, that come to it. And last, but not least, and only because mine are leased, just to keep that in mind, when they're, you know, when they are leased, there is an option of, if I move, I will when, you know, when they are leased, there is an option of, if I move, I will take them with me, and that value also goes away. So, you know, when people talk about how are you gonna have that shortage now, how are you gonna come, yeah, it's sort of give and take. It's a fluid kind of thing with people who actually have leased ones, because, you know, it doesn't seem to be, you know, if the buyer doesn't want them, they say, yeah, it's all great, but they're leased, so I don't want them, you know, it's your option to take them with you, so that value goes away. And last thing, 'cause I thought about it, just having it be an ordinance, I think, is definitely the right thing to do, and that's when I come back to you in agreement. I think you guys, all of you are doing the right thing. I do really, I do, and I'm sure everybody who has solar really appreciates it. Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you.
Quick comment, if I could, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, go ahead.
Make it very quick. No, 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 just a general comment about other communities. One of the things that I've learned, there's actually a community that is near us that doesn't have an abatement. They now do, but at one particular point, they didn't, and they were putting the solar panels on the assessment card, and they weren't assessing them. Because there was no uniformity as to how that particular part of the realty should be assessed. There's also Manchester is one community that is working with one particular database. There's another community that's working with another database. Our assessor's using, you get so many different databases that are being used, that there's actually a movement trying to get everybody standardized onto one particular system so that if they don't, if they don't have the exemption as an ordinance, they know how, they know how to assess them. And if they do have the exemption, they know exactly what to plug into the system in order to throw out the appropriate assessed value of a piece of property. So, and it's kind of interesting, 'cause the law's been on the books since the late seventies, early eighties, and, you know, still kind of problem there. So anyway, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Yes?
Rob Link, One Crest View Circle. I just wanted to thank the council for their decision to move ahead with the solar as well as the veteran exemption as well. I think those are two important and the right, decisions made for the right reasons. I wanna thank Mr. Albert particularly for moving ahead to get it as part of this meeting for the solar exemption. I do think, again, looking at some of the stuff I've said before, so sorry if I sound like a broken record, but if you look at the surrounding towns, Nashua, Bedford, Amherst, Manchester, they all have exemptions, and this town is competing, I think, for residents and residents that care about the community and are trying to do the right thing, and those are the type of people that we should be trying to attract to this town versus those people saying, well, Merrimack seems a little backwards. It's actually a complete outlier compared to most of the towns of its size or bigger in southern New Hampshire. So I think that's something to keep in mind as well. I do think in terms of, you know, benefiting a small amount of people and things like that, one of the things to keep in mind with solar is it reduces the total amount of electricity being used in the state, so everybody actually benefits from it, and the more people that get it, the lower the electric rates will be, because the lower the demand will be. So there's no, as far as I know, there's no other investment, for lack of a better term, that you can make to your home that actually truly benefits financially the community as a whole, let alone, you know, we're talking about St. Cobain and, you know, how horrible the things that they're doing to this town are. I think it makes sense to have that mindset when we're looking at renewable energy and clean energy. And then the final thing I wanted to say in term, just to, I guess, foot stomp, one of the things that you were bringing up in terms of the price not being really based on any strong data set, right? There's data out there, maybe that some of the other towns are using, but it's weakened. I think our rate shows that, because my particular assessment is actually more than I paid for my system brand-new. So that, again, kind of shows that it's not fair, 'cause, right, you know, a car, you know, I bought it or I got it, you know, three years ago, you wouldn't pay more, you wouldn't, a car wouldn't be valued for more than you paid for it three years later, right? So again, it shows it's not, it's just not, it's not done right, and I don't think, it can be done right with the amount of data that's out there. So I think this is the right thing to do. So, thank you.
Thank you very much for the lively conversation. Hopefully it continues down the same path. But I had a couple data points that I think you might find really valuable. My son is a solar designer, so I know about solar through osmosis, I think, but I'll tell you about my system. My system is being assessed for ninety-six hundred dollars. We save less than two thousand dollars per year. And so I'm getting taxed on the full value at ninety-six hundred instead of the real value of it, which is two thousand. No one's gonna buy the house because it's worth ninety-six hundred dollars. They're gonna buy it because it saves almost two thousand dollars a year. I am lucky, 'cause I was grandfathered in, we had a discussion earlier, and I wanted to make this point, it's important, that the utility is considered a battery. So you produce the energy during the day when it's sunny. It goes off to the energy company, and then comes back. I get full credit for everything that comes back, so I get distribution back, and I get the fuel back, the energy back. If you put in solar right now, you have to pay the distribution, and so you literally lose fifty percent of that value. It's gone. So my system that I put in today, instead of making two thousand dollars, almost two thousand dollars, I'd only make a thousand. And if you're renting, then the problem is that it's way lower than that, because you're only getting a fraction of what's produced. And if you're only now getting a thousand bucks back to start with, then you're gonna get a fraction of a thousand, not a fraction of two thousand. So it's really losing a lot of value. I have one friend who's a longtime resident of Merrimack, and his solar system is not very efficient. He actually pays more in tax than he's saving in energy. Thank you.
Thanks.
And he has the old grandfathered one, so he's actually getting full value, so he's doing pretty well.
Can you give your name and address, too, please?
Oh, Rudy Baselman, one seventy-four Nattica Road.
Thank you. Saying no more, we'll close the public comment period. Comments from the public, from the council? Excuse me.
Okay, just two quick things. We forgot to, or I forgot to...
Can you put your mic back on?
I'm gonna have to have an automatic switch on. We forgot to put into the record that Carol DiPiero and Mary Beth Raven has written letters of support for the solar exemption, so I'd just like to have those put in the record. And second, just very quickly, I did attend the first meeting of the commission for PFOA last Friday. There was a small report from DES and DHHS. I did a fifty-words-or-less representation of what we had done, and I started it by saying, I know DES, and I looked right at them, are not happy with Merrimack, at which point everyone sort of chuckled, but that was it. Anyway, we are setting up the next meeting for November first, and I'm not gonna be reporting every single time. I will report as there are significant things going on, 'cause this is gonna go on for a long time, but I thought I'd just set it up. There are subcommittees that have been set up, and I have volunteered for two, which are the health impacts and also for the local town government subcommittee. And I'll keep you up to date on that, okay?
Awesome. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else have any comments from the council?
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
Motion made by Bill and seconded by Barbara to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, abstaining? That passes seven zero zero. Thank you, folks, for coming out.
Lon wanted a vote against adjourn.